City Council on Monday, March 8 at 7:00 PM. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20, members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream. City Council meeting livestream at http://bit.ly/dailycitymar8. And for public participation, there are two ways to submit public comment. Send written comments by 4:00 PM on the meeting day and also register to speak at the meeting via Zoom. So may we all rise to do the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of Tina America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura.
President.
Dr. Rod.
President.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
President.
Mr. Sylvester.
Mr. Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present. Thank you very much. So at this time, what I'd like to do is before the approval of the minutes is actually the state of proclamation. For many of you today is International Women's Day, exactly on March 8. And so I'd like to read the proclamation. So whereas International Women's Day is a global day celebrating the social, economic, and cultural and political achievements of women. And whereas annually on March 8, International Women's Day symbols a call to action for accelerating women's equality and help forge a gender equal world. And whereas International Women's Day has occurred for well over a century, were the first International Women's Day gathering in 1911, supported by over a million people, and today belongs to all groups collectively everywhere and not one country, group, or organization specific. And whereas International Women's Day 2021's theme is choose to challenge. A challenged world is an alert world, and individually, we can all choose to challenge and call out gender bias and inequality. We can all choose to seek out and celebrate women's achievements, and collectively, we can all help create an inclusive world. And whereas March is the month that we honor women who have shaped America's history and its future through the tireless commitment to ending discrimination against women and girls, we celebrate women fighting not only against sexism, but also against many intersecting forms of discrimination faced by American women, including discrimination based on race and ethnicity, class, disability, sexual orientation, veteran status, and many other categories. And whereas Daily City's population balances and tips slightly in favor of women, with 50.6% of residents identifying as female, though at the time of Daily City's incorporation in 1911, women were not afforded the right to vote. And so now I therefore, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor of Daily City, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim March 8 International Women's Day in Daily City to honor International Women's Day. You know, there is not one organization I'd like to send this out to. This is actually to every woman residing in Daily City and to every woman working in Daily City. You know, as we continue to fight for equality for now and for the future. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you. And now moving on to our approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of February 22, 2021, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Now moving on to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember D. Giovanni, second by, was that Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And now moving on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
The move.
Okay, move by Vice Mayor. Second by Councilmember Sylvester. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Now moving on to item number two on our public hearings. It's the ordinance amending Chapter 10.12 of the Daily City Municipal Code Speed Limits. And we have our staff member, Ms. Chan.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council. Tonight's staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 10.12 of the Daily City Municipal Code Speed Limits, adopt the resolution to approve the Engineering and Traffic Study 2021, and introduce introduction of ordinance to amend Chapter 10.12 of the Daily City Municipal Code Speed Limits. The California Vehicle Code requires that an engineering and traffic study be performed to validate the posted speed limits on local streets and which also allows law enforcement to enforce the speed limits by use of the radar. The last time the Daily City prepared an engineering traffic study was back in 2010. So speed limits are based on the primary, best, fashi speed limits of 25 miles per hour are recommended for residential streets and business districts and school zones, and 15 miles per hour for alleyways, but along major arteries and corridors, we have to do a speed survey along different segments. And so we have to base the posted speed limit on the 85th percentile speed. So based on the California manual uniform of traffic control devices, the posted speed limit needs to be based on the closest 85th percentile speed. So you normally have to round to the nearest 5 mile per hour speed limit. So based on the surveys that were done, most of the speed limits that are currently posted today are valid. But we are recommending that four segments be reduced based on the results. So we are recommending that Hickey between Geller and the Eastern City Limit be lowered from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. John Daly Boulevard between Juniper Sarah and Mission Street be lowered from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. Juniper Sarah between the city limit at Colma and to John Daly Boulevard be lowered from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. And then also on St. Francis Boulevard, from Eastmore Avenue to Cerro Monte Boulevard, be lowered from the 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. So the first three corridors, Hickey Boulevard, John Daly, and Juniper Sarah are all part of the city's high injury network, which is the arterials where there's a high concentration of fatalities or serious injuries. And it's been shown that speed is, the higher this vehicle travels, the more serious the injuries are. So by lowering the speed limit, we hope to then reduce the serious and fatality rate along those corridors. And St. Francis Boulevard is a primary residential street. So and since most residential streets are already set for 25 miles per hour, we feel that this is more consistent with all the other residential streets in Daily City. In addition, we also have Class 2 and Class 3 bike facilities that we recently added that is consistent with our pet and bike master plan. So all the other streets will remain the same except for these four corridors. So the posted, I mean, the Engineering and Traffic Study consists of a table showing all the currently posted speed limit and the recommended speed limits. And on some of them, we reduce the speed limit, the posted speed limit based on what's allowed in the code so that we are consistent with what is posted. So we are... So with that, there are no other changes, but we are updating some of the limits of the segments that were originally posted in the ordinance. So it doesn't change the posted speed limit, but just some of the segments that were already in the ordinance, I think, were outdated, and so we're just kind of cleaning that up. So if staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chan, for your presentation. Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time?
Yes, I have a few for me.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chan. Thank you so much for the report. I've looked over the enclosed documents to include accidents that were created, that happened in our city. And we're talking about here in decreasing the speed in some of the neighborhoods, but we use the accidents and, as you made mention, because of the high fatality. And looking at the accidents, I don't see many causes of the accidents, primarily the factor called the primary collision factor. As 22350A, meaning speed, they had numerous other vehicle code sections, 21453 for red lights, 22450 stop signs. And I think that if we were going to reduce the speed, that we should have information to validate because of speed. This is why we should change some of the items, but that's just a comment. Also, in your presentation, you made mention that law enforcement uses radar. So I think that that should be changed or amended to include either clocking or observation. If law enforcement sees a vehicle and they don't have radar in their vehicle, they'll usually get behind the vehicle and follow the vehicle for a distance of at least two blocks. And that's a different method of validating speed. So that would be my comment in that area. And then thirdly, I'm hoping that I've asked for a cost recovery. So have our fines remained the same for the, over the past 10 years? For instance, a red light violation, the normal average throughout the state, $490. What does Daily City charge for a red light violation?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I would hope we can do a follow-up, and I think that would be also based on cost recovery because I think Daily City is behind in their fines. And also, according to the California Vehicle Code, the speed limit is 25 miles per hour unless otherwise posted. So you had made mention like the alleyways might be like 15 miles per hour and around schools. That should be reduced. So to comply with the provisions of the California Vehicle Code, I would recommend that Daily City make sure that it posts signs around where the speed limit is reduced, under 25 miles per hour. Have we thought about that as well?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Richard, and I can chime in a little bit in regards to that. Primarily, the residential streets, one lane in each direction. Those are in residential areas, those are automatically 5 miles per hour, 25 miles per hour, excuse me. For the other locations where it may be a little unclear, where there's like two lanes in each direction, those are definitely posted with the speed limit, and definitely the ones that we are lowering will be changed and reposted with the lowest limit.
Excellent. You know, I'm gonna take, for example, Jefferson High School. I don't recall seeing a sign there. So El Camino Real, north and southbound directions, I believe it's at least two lanes. Would that change? I mean, I understand that that's a state highway, but would signs be posted that since you're approaching school, it's less than 25 miles per hour when it's normally 30?
Yeah, for El Camino, that's not part of our study. Couch Dance does do speed limit surveys as well as we do, and so we would definitely need to coordinate with them in regards to the posted speed limit. Oftentimes, they may have some signage regarding speed limit when school is in session, which is, you know, maybe the lower speed limit.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And how about the question on enforcing by radar? There are other methods that law enforcement uses to determine speed. And observation, a 21453A red light violation, that cannot be done by radar, but actually observing. And if an accident occurs, to obtain statements and evidence to show that it was a red light as being the primary collision factor.
Yes, Councilmember Sylvester, you're absolutely right. The reason why we mentioned radar specifically in this speed survey is because radar requires the speed survey to be conducted in order to be able to use radar. The other methods of enforcement do not need a radar survey. And so that's the reason why those aren't specifically mentioned.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I have no further questions.
Councilmember Sylvester. Now I'm asking any other, like, any one of my colleagues if they have any other questions.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you very much. First, I'm gonna say, Ms. Chan, thank you very much for the study. It was very thorough, and I know you took into consideration a lot of the safety issues around the schools because it's a high pedestrian area. I noted that even the Juniper Sarah, where they walk to Woodrow School, that was lowered as well, which I appreciate that because I remember that was a focus. So thank you, Mr. Chu and Ms. Chan, for looking at that as well because I'm sure that that's probably when the high, when we did the arterial studies for the Vision Zero. I remember that was an accident area and that where the families crossed to go to Woodrow and to the other schools. So I appreciate that, that you guys went through that study. Was a lot of that based on our Vision Zero information as well, Ms. Chan?
Yes, so that segment on John Daly,
Right.
between, yeah, Juniper Sarah and Mission, that's based on our Vision Zero network.
Excellent, excellent, because I remember at CCAG when we discussed that. So that lowering that will definitely help the families as well feel a little bit safer. Now we have to do is just get people to slow down, and hopefully we can figure that one out as well. But thank you for that because when we were out there with the schools, it's very important. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chu, as well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I don't see any, anyone else from my colleagues at this point. No, is there a motion to adopt? Or actually, is this?
It's a public hearing.
It's a hearing. Okay, let's, do you have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Stephen, are there any public comments in regards to this item, please?
If any member of the public that is in our meeting would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature, and then I'll call you by name, and you will have two minutes max to speak. Okay, we have one person. Oh, I thought I saw one person. Okay, it doesn't look like we have anyone to speak on this public hearing.
Thank you, thank you very much. So at this point, I'd have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. And now, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution amending the speed limits.
Okay, we have a first. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by Councilmember Veda Ventura. And may we have roll call, please, City Clerk.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Mr. Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now, motion for the City Attorney to read by title only. Attorneys and rumin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Member City Council. This is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Daily City repealing and replacing Chapter 10.12 of the Daily City Municipal Code regarding speed limits.
Thank you very much. And now, the next item is a Councilmember to introduce the ordinance.
I'll take the honors, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 10.2, 10.12 of the Daily City Municipal Code Speed Limits.
Thank you very much. Do we need roll call for that?
No roll call needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. And thank you very much, Ms. Chan, for that presentation and all your work. Now moving on to item number three. Urgency ordinance to require grocery stores to provide hazard pay to their employees. Attorney Zimmerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council. Before you this evening is the consideration to conduct a public hearing to adopt a urgency ordinance to require grocery stores and/or retailers to provide hazard pay to their employees. By way of background, the City Council did express an interest in the concept of requiring grocery stores to pay hazard pay to their employees, and also expressed some interest in including drugstores to pay hazard pay comparable to their neighboring jurisdictions. By way of background, also, several jurisdictions in the state of California currently considered a version of hazard pay as well as adopted an ordinance that would provide extra hourly pay to certain retail workers during the COVID-19 pandemic in recognition to the heightened health risks associated with their work. According to the Brookings Institution analysis, the United States' largest grocery and drugstore retail companies have earned record-breaking profits during the pandemic, and this increase in profits has not transferred to their workers. The proposed ordinance is drafted as an urgency measure reflecting the council's initial direction to take action on this matter quickly. The recitals contained in the ordinance establish the basis for the urgency, including the studies reflecting the dangers faced by the workers eligible for hazard pay. At the council's initial direction, the staff drafted a proposed ordinance with a summary of terms. The rate of pay included $5 per hour in addition to the base pay of the hourly worker. Types of retailers included grocery stores, which are defined as stores that primarily sell household food products for off-site consumption. The threshold for the grocery stores subject to the ordinance included grocery stores that are over 12,000 square feet in size, located in the city of Daily City, and employ 500 or more employees nationwide. Its enforcement included a private right of action for employees subject to the ordinance, and the duration is 120 days upon the effective date of the ordinance. It is recommended at this time that the council conduct a public hearing considered a proposed urgency ordinance for hazard pay, and staff is available for any additional information or questions desired by the council or mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Zimmerman, for that and your work on this and your presentation on this ordinance, urgency ordinance. Now, so prior to proceeding, I do have some amendments I'd like to bring forth to my colleagues. You know, grocery store workers are, as you mentioned, are some of the most lowest paid and have been tirelessly on the front lines during this pandemic and have risked their lives, and so giving them hazard pay is the right thing to do. But they are constantly in front of so many people on the daily. But we also see this with drugstore workers in the same circumstance I mentioned above. So let me move on to my proposed changes. First of all, since the inception of the first draft on the 8th, whereas, I'd like to strike 700 to 2,000 UFCW workers in the region that have been infected. So there has been a rise in that. Also, add the inclusion of drugstores to the ordinance, and also the reduction of 12,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet so that it is inclusive of some of the essential stores that we have in Daily City. Also, another change is to devote, instead of 70% or more, I'd like to see that changed to 10% or more so that 10% or more of the interior space to the sale of food products so that we can include some larger corporate stores that have been essential. And lastly, you know, the premise of hazard pay is really have stemmed from the COVID-19 pandemic and the risk of exposure. And one way to support these workers is providing a COVID-19 vaccination paid leave. And what that means is if an employee would show their confirmed appointment that they're gonna be vaccinated, and if it's during scheduled work hours, then the employer would allow them sufficient time for the employee to receive their vaccination, but not exceeding four hours. And so those are some of the amendments I'd like to see in this urgency ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
I could...
Councilmember Ventura.
So I want to say I fully support the amendments that you were suggesting. I want to also thank you for putting this item on our agenda right away. I know that this is an issue that is important to you, it's important to the community, and the speed in which you acted, I thought, was necessary. So I fully support this ordinance. I've always, you know, when I first heard about this... I've always, you know, when I first heard about this idea of hazard pay, I thought it was an absolutely necessary and good idea. It made sense to me. The grocery stores are critical to our functioning and it's one of those places where it's actually quite dangerous to go. And I know that we're hopefully doing better now and the pandemic is, we're on its way to recovering from it, but we never know with these strains and what these workers are experiencing. I'm very humbled that we could do something for them and I think opening up the restrictions to even allow for more people to be taken care of is commendable, it's just, and it should be done. I actually was, you know, what struck me and I had mentioned this before, was the profits that these corporations are making. And I had inquired about whether or not we can tie the profits to the amount the workers will receive. Because some of these corporations are just making just a lot of profit and it's not moving to the, to workers to reap some of the benefits, even though they are the ones that are really the ones putting themselves in danger for us, for their family. And so, but I understand that in talking to the city attorney that you can't really accomplish that because of the, 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 the amount is sort of a trade secret or whatever and and so you can't really tie the profits, even though that would be my preference. In the alternative, I would like us in Daly City to take a bigger lead. And we are talking about $5. I think we can do more. And we don't have to follow what other cities are doing by maintaining that $5 level. And I would really like a discussion and a consideration that we go beyond what the standard or normal seems to be, because you know, we are the largest city in San Mateo County and we should act like it. And that includes taking care of our people, our workers, and making a mark for Daly City. I'm also curious about, you know, this ordinance is set to expire in 120 days. I'm interested in expanding that further. But, you know, I understand that there are mechanisms to do that, so my questions would be, you know, when would be the appropriate time to reconsider either continuing with the ordinance by extending it in longer duration? Or just making it longer now? You know, I want to be positive with respect to what's happening with COVID, but I don't think it's going to happen quickly. And this, like I said, these strains that are affecting the communities now are cause for concern. And, you know, the workers have already suffered and I would just like to give them some reassurances because they really are putting themselves in jeopardy for our sake and they should be rewarded. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, those are my comments for now.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura and Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'd like to echo my colleagues, because when I first brought it up about the expansion, I'm glad now, thanks to, I want to thank Julie Lynn Rupp from the Labor Council and UFCW. And when I first brought it up about the idea of the Target and Walgreens and those kind of places being involved, I now am happy to hear the mayor and them to accept that expansion. From the beginning of conversation, it has expanded that to now, so I thank you for now reconsidering it. And from the first conversation that we had. And then as far as the review after 90 days, probably, if we have 120 days, if the city attorney would recommend that as well. But everything else, adding the drugstore, we are here for the workers of Daly City and we need to do everything we can for them. And thanking the Labor Council for contacting, actually she contacted the, the mayor, Manalo and myself right away. So I appreciate that, knowing that action would be taken tonight. So with their guidance and their input across the board, labor is really coming strong. And again, thank my colleagues for expanding your thoughts from the first conversation to now, to add in the drugstores as I had asked and to, which would in turn change the square footage and to reduce the 70% of the food when I first asked. So thank you very much and I look forward to this. Let's see what we can do to continue our working families in our community and continue to support, support UFCW and our Labor Council and everything that they ask for, because they're for the working families and so are we. So let's do what we can and get this going so that it can get to those people who've been waiting a long time and have, many have lost their lives. It's sad to say, I know many of them actually that got sick at our local store. So, and for those that, for people to know that those that have already given the hazard pay, such as Trader Joe's, they'll be credited for what they've already given. And it'll be up to $5, so they'll get a credit and this will not affect any small businesses whatsoever. So primarily, I'm happy that Target, CVS, Walgreens, all those workers, and they're very low-paid as well, will be included in this and it's a start, so to protect our workers. So with that, I conclude, people know I stand for the working families as well, so thank you very much. Thank you, Labor Council, Julie Lynn Rupp, I see Melinda Dart is there, and UFCW, Jim Araby, and everyone. And thank you to the workers as well and to my colleagues, let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes, I have a comment for me.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. You know, when we first brought this up, I had a lot of questions, a lot of questions. And I was concerned about the setting of precedence, the equity, the equality. And I reached out to obtain further information. I have to echo Councilmember D. Giovanni, one of the first ones who got back to me immediately was Ms. Julie Lynn Rupp of the Labor Council. And we all know that Daly City supports labor, but there's something different about this. And that is actually the pandemic. I am really not too concerned right now in the sense of how the big box stores have feared during this pandemic, but I am concerned about the individuals who work in these places. And I would like to recommend the following changes to be added or considered. I see managers and supervisors in the ordinance. I think we need to include as part of that group is confidential employees. Because these corporations have them, but these confidential employees may not be on the front line. So to define them as to be excluded, I think it's very, very important. Next, I think the hours of operation. Let's say someone who are stocking the shelves at night, and most places do this when the stores are closed. Well, they don't have no exposure to the public and the community that comes in if the stores are closed. So we need to consider that as well. Confidential employee stocking. And Councilmember D. Giovanni said the magic word to me and I think we've forgotten, and that's the drugstore folks, the pharmacists. Folks buy food, folks get their medicine, and they are going into the stores and the pharmacists and the drugstore employees have to serve them. And I think they're at risk too. So I need, I hope this ordinance will show that it should apply to them as well if they're working in that capacity. And lastly, the mayor had mentioned the percentage decrease. According to the ordinance, it was 70% and the mayor was recommending 10%. And prior to the mayor speaking, I was thinking a, at least a minimum of 40% square, square footage of the entire place. But given that I've heard 10% on the table, I think this will send a clear message that this is well-needed, it's needed now, and we should move forward with it. Thank you very much, and that's all the comments I have at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester for your comments.
Mayor, yeah, I contribute to the discussion as well. I concur with my colleagues. I feel that we're facing unprecedented times. And during unprecedented times, we do unprecedented things. So I concur with everyone, I'm in total support of this urgent bill and yeah, and I welcome all the amended amendments by both my colleagues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this point, if there are no other comments or questions from my colleagues, I do ask for a motion to open the hearing.
Motion to open the hearing, public hearing?
I have a first, second by Councilmember Sylvester. And Stephen, are there anyone, anybody in the queue, please?
Yes, I will. Let me just open my participant list here. Okay, so any member of the public that would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. I have, and you will have two minutes maximum and you can just watch the screen for the timer. The first we have is Nick Ochi Pinti. So Nick, if you want to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, Nick.
So I think, yes, I would say, thanks, first of all, for bringing this to the table today. It is long overdue and much needed at any time here, especially in Daly City. And a quick shout out to South City City Council, which I believe was the first city to pass the ordinance in our county. So, I mean, we've been asking for hazard pay for months, almost a year now, and so it is timely. I can say that as a former retail and sales and stock worker and retail manager here in Daly City in the mall, that the working conditions include risks and involve risks for all employees. So I would suggest leaving confidential employees and stock, especially those who work in the warehouse under intense physical labor conditions, to include them in the ordinance because they are essential workers nonetheless. And if, for those who haven't worked those jobs, that's hard work. And in addition to that, a lot of our workers are our students here as a member of our school board or high school board. I can say that I know for a fact that a lot of our students are essential workers, including their parents and even grandparents and older, elder community members who are working retail jobs because they cannot afford to stop working. And they can't even afford their bills even with that work. So this, this would have a huge impact in helping recover some of the lost income they haven't had because they've been taking on retail jobs that are not paid a higher wage. In addition to that, I think I would encourage at this point, for many of the council members who've expressed wanting to take a larger role, which I totally agree with, as a larger city in our county, to revisit our minimum wage, which is among the lowest, not only in our county, but in the Bay Area, especially for a city of our size. And so understanding that we should be working towards a living wage and encouraging, of course, labor in our county to get behind that as well would be a great step for Daly City in taking that leadership. In addition, I want to honor the fact that Section 5, Item J, in terms of reducing the store space to 10% is a smart move and should be acknowledged that way. And I would also encourage, lastly, to consider retroactive pay for the past year since we are this far into 2021. And that they would make a huge impact on the lives of workers and families in our community, in our community as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ochi Pinti. Let me reset the timer here. The next person is Julie Lynn, so if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Manalo, Vice Mayor Daus Magwall, council members and staff. I'm Julie with the San Mateo Labor Council. Thanks for giving me a few moments of your time this evening and thanks to Mayor Manalo for raising the issue and to council for choosing to move forward on it. Thank you also to the mayor for her proposed amendments to the draft ordinance. We stand in strong support of them all. While all of our numerous frontline workers are serving heroically and putting themselves into dangerous situations to deliver critical goods and services, the motivation behind this for these workers specifically is rate of pay and degree of exposure. The workers that would be covered under this ordinance make an average of $17 an hour, are physically interacting with hundreds of people every shift and have been since the onset of the pandemic, have a national COVID infection rate of 1 in 5, and have taken on myriad additional duties relative to COVID protocols with no additional compensation. Further, most long ago exhausted any paid sick leave and are now forced to go without pay should they need to quarantine due to COVID exposure or care for themselves or family members who contracted. This additional period of compensation will help them offset some of that financial hardship and will hopefully allow these workers to get the added critical protection of the COVID vaccine. As you know, South City and San Mateo already have ordinances in effect that mirror what yours would be if amended, as you all have suggested. And Redwood City and San Carlos are considering moving forward with hazard pay at their meetings as we speak, and Millbury plans to take it up tomorrow. Chain stores continue to rake in record profits, none of which they invest in the workers, with the exception of luckies that make it possible. And our folks are incredibly grateful to you for seeking to right that wrong. We hope you'll choose to pass this ordinance tonight and we'll encourage your colleagues in other cities to follow and lead.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Okay, the next person that I'd like to call on is actually an unnamed guest that called in by phone. I changed your name so it wouldn't show your phone number, but I saw you unmuted yourself. It was a 415 phone number. Is, do you have a comment on this item?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Dan Larson, President of UFCW Local 648. We represent grocery and drug workers in Daly City and other areas of San Mateo County and San Francisco. Our members have been on the front line of this pandemic since it began and have not had the luxury of working from home that many people have. Despite the ongoing hazards, increased risk of being exposed to the coronavirus and lack of, lack of voluntary support from their employers. They have, they have continued to report to work and serve the community and are tasked with the additional responsibility of maintaining a safe environment for shoppers by maintaining social distancing, wearing and monitoring mask usage, disinfecting high-touch areas and limiting customers in stores. Excuse me, our members suffer the abuse from frustrated customers who have yelled and spat at them. Essential workers putting their lives on the line every day that they walk into the store. Our members work hard, long hours, and through difficult situations. Our members, the essential workers, cannot get vaccinated and there's no clear time when they can. They keep the economy running and we need your support for hazard pay for them, and please do not forget the essential workers like their employers did. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I am just going to mute you again, just to reduce background noise. Okay, the next person is Cynthia Lukowicz. If you'd like to unmute yourself.
I have unmuted myself. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I just want to say, as an essential worker in a grocery store, not in Daly City, but in one of the neighboring cities, which has not yet enacted the $5 hazard pay, working at late hours of the night and everything, we really need to be taken care of and we really deserve to get what we are owed. We are out there every day, no matter what, for all of you to go out and shop. For all of you to go out and shop. And we do get spat on and we do have to deal with people not wanting to wear their masks. And we do have to clean down and wipe down areas for the common areas where everybody touches. So. Um, I appreciate what everybody has said here tonight and I would like to also make note that. Um, the people who stock the shelves, they're just as important as your cashiers. Or the people that are at the door or your pharmacist or anybody else. If they didn't put that stuff on the shelves, you wouldn't have your food to get the next day. So they should be included in this as well. Um. And I, you, and I wish you to all, please, please, please ask our neighboring cities to take this ordinance into effect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person will be Richard Hedges, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Manalo and Honorable City Council Members. I've been in the grocery industry since nineteen fifty eight. I know this industry well. I listened to the President of our International Union speak on CBS. Where he's told us that seventy seven thousand of our members nationally have been infected by this virus and six hundred died. Untold members of family contracting this virus by then taking it home. We've had not two thousand, but nearly three thousand members of, infected in the Bay Area. Uh, that's including local six forty eight and local five, my local. Uh, I would like for you to be very careful about who you exclude. This, the, the companies are very good at extending, at expanding, uh, exclusions. Confidential employee could mean anything, even the people that work in the booth and have contact daily with customers. Night crew members also have contact with customers as well as delivery people and so on and so forth. Excluding them would be a big mistake. I want to thank you for bringing this forward though, and it's going to do a lot of good. I can't think of, uh, I can't thank you enough for considering it. Hopefully you will pass it. And not exclude people who deserve to be included. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Leon Wong, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and Staff. I'm Leon with UFCW Local Five, representing thousands of groceries. And pharmacy workers in the Bay Area. I wanted to voice out for our essential workers regarding hazard pay. Many people may be confused by the name hazard pay because when in fact it should be called appreciation pay or hero pay. Hazard pay is not just an appreciation for their service to the community during this pandemic. But most importantly, these extra dollars per hour will help them buy extra PPEs that their employers failed to provide. Besides helping them with their bills that buy more food for their family and that makes a huge difference for the workers. These workers have the highest risk of COVID nineteen exposure when compared to bank workers and workers in other industry. Due to the high volume of customers they encounter in person every day. Companies have commented about providing an extra five dollars an hour is close to a thirty percent wage increase, which is unheard of. That number only shows that these essential workers have long been underpaid and underappreciated. These companies claim to take pride in giving the best treatments to the, their workers. And yet, when we ask them to provide temporary relief, like COVID, COVID pay, hazard pay to their workers at the time they need it the most. These companies turn their backs and simply say they have already provided enough. These workers face so much difficulties and stress in trying to stay safe at work, just so we can bring food to our table and provide medication to those who depend on it. They didn't give up serving our community, even when facing the risk of COVID for them and their family. So to show appreciation for these hidden heroes, for all that they do for our community. We're not giving up on hazard pay for them and we respectfully request that you consider an urgency ordinance. For hazard pay of five dollars per hour for our groceries and drugstore workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. We have the next public comment from Eduardo Gonzalez, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, everyone, City Council and City Staff. Hope you're doing well. My name is Eduardo Lalo Gonzalez. I'm a Daly City resident, um, and here in support of this ordinance. I think it's super important and just want to echo what has already been mentioned. Um, first, you know, considering retroactive pay, we already, um, we're going for a year in this pandemic, so it would be great to take this a step further. And attractively pay staff. Um, secondly, it also include all workers, including those at stock shelves and confidential employees. Um, no, these are reasons that have been stated before me. And lastly, um, I ask that you keep this momentum going, um, and keep this pay indefinite as a step towards fair wages. Cause we know that this has been long overdue, uh, here in the Bay Area especially. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you for your comments. I do not see any additional, uh, raised hands at this time there.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you for all those that provided public comments. Um, everyone that spoke today. Um, thank you, the Labor Council, Julie Lind. And, uh, appreciate you reaching out on this and taking the leadership in our county. Um, you know, for me, you know, it's extremely important that we take this, um, uh, matter on today. And I was trying to push it on even earlier. Um, and, uh, we've come to this point. And it's not a regular ordinance, it's an urgency ordinance because we know that, uh, it's, uh. We want it to be more immediate than later. And so. Um, something, you know, I, I hope that, uh, we can move forward with this. And I have a motion to adopt the ordinance with the following changes aforementioned earlier. But I do, um, you know, something did resonate with me in regards to, um, this is a time in which. Uh, these workers are faced with, um, multiple amounts of people every single day. Right? When we go to the grocery store, um, and they, they are not afforded, afforded the opportunity to work from home. And in that regard, they're risking themselves, they're risking their families, um, and loved ones, right? And so, you know, it was mentioned earlier, um, that we should do more. And, uh, it, it resonated with me, uh, uh, council member, but of interest at six dollars. And that resonated because it is, uh, these are the ones that are, uh, on the front lines. Whether it is, as mentioned earlier, you know, the grocery store, uh, workers in. Trader Joe's and that Lucky's and, and other areas or Target, um, and Walgreens. And so, um, that's the addition that I have in regards to, uh, the amendments that I've proposed on the table. Uh, to, uh, you know, ensure that, um, what's mentioned in legislation is that there's actually two thousand. Uh, UFC workers, um, and I, I, I want to say, you know, I was a proud UFC, um, union. Um, part of that union when I was younger and, um, was definitely, um, proud to be part of that union. When I was working in, in the retail, uh, feet world. Um, and so also, uh, the reduction, um, to ten thousand feet, uh, to, it's just ensuring that. You know, the Trader Joe's and grocery outlets are included. And really the seventy to ten percent is, there is a, a, a lot of workers that live. Um, and in, in Daly City and to work at, in, in the target, right? Um, in, in Daly City. And so, uh, that's something important to include and, uh, definitely the paid leave. Because, uh, you know, some of the workers, you know, if, if they're choosing. Um, you know, money on the table to feed their families and then heading out to a vaccination. And yet, you know, um, they don't have that paid, paid leave. I think that, you know, they should be afforded that, uh, opportunity. But that's the only change is, um, that I would, uh, I think is important. I know that, um, uh, Councilmember Sylvester used, used to mention something about the confidential. Confidential employees. Um, you're, are you asking to, um, include it? Or to, uh, strike it? For one of the amendments.
Um, well, there was actually, uh, two areas, Madam Mayor. One is confidential employees. I feel that, uh, at least I'm unaware as to how much interaction they have with the public. And so that's why I'd ask to exclude them. And, uh, after hearing the comments tonight, I'm also going to remain firm. That, uh, the stocking personnel, when the stores are closed, uh, should be excluded. When the stores are closed, when they're open, then they should be included as part of the, uh, grocery workers. Because they deal with the public. So that's just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to share something that's when, uh, some of the people brought up the exposures that they get. So I won't go into details about what store and where this happened and what city. But this is just gives you an idea that when someone doesn't wear a mask and these employees are told, uh, to wear a mask. Please wear a mask or whatever, they can be threatened and they have been threatened. And it's pretty serious and sometimes the police has to be called. So that's one thing. Second thing is, I want a clarification in the, um, when I mentioned the employees. And I heard what Councilmember Sylvester said, but I thought in the ordinance, it was going to say any worker that works two hours or more. Um, cause you know, when you view equity a little differently, um, I just want to hear from my colleagues. I think the clarification, um, Ms. Zimmerman, if you'll correct me. Um, does it clarify to include all employees that work two hours or more? Cause I know that even some of them at our local Westlake Safeway make minimum wage. Yes. So when he was saying the higher rate, but over here, some of them make minimum wage. They don't make seventeen dollars an hour. So it's pretty low. It's pretty low. So this gives us a chance to even help them as well, no matter where they are in that store. And sometimes they do more than one job, like perhaps they're over there maybe doing shelving at night. And then the next day they could be cashing or be at the self checkout. So I like to take that into consideration as well because they could switch their jobs and, and where they work and what department. And, um, they're known to do that. The management does that over at our store. So, um, I would like to think that through and to make sure that everybody, um, is included. Um, and for those particular reasons, because that's how they operate over here and pretty low pay. So please take that into consideration. And my second thing was, um, that we could probably review this in ninety days, maybe. Um, and to make sure, uh, um, on what the mayor, Madam Mayor was saying. That the, when you do the definition of the grocery retail and the dedicated ten percent of the square footage to non taxable food items. Um, such as, you know, we know Target. So, and everything other amended as she spoke and everyone else I think agree upon. But I think it's something to consider and, uh, the delivery drivers that deliver for Safeway as well. So me as a total package, I know they switch from one thing to the next. They don't always do the same jobs.
And, uh, Mayor.
Under the management.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Are you finished?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Benaventura.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Yeah, so, uh, I, I, I have a little bit of, uh, a different take on, on excluding people. I, I actually don't think that's a good idea.
Right.
Um, me either.
I, I, I think if anything, we need to be expanding it. And so although I, 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 you know, I recognize Councilmember Sylvester's, um, uh, analysis. Um, you know, I, I, I think we need to always, we, we keep in mind that this virus. Is contagious and it is contagious even more so than before. Um, and that, uh, we really don't, uh, there, there's still much more to learn about the. Uh, the virus from South America and, um, or the South African virus, uh, and the UK virus. Um, and, and how that, that, how it can be so contagious even though. Um, there may be less people at the grocery store. Uh, so that's one thing. Um, the other thing that I'm very interested in is the idea of retroactivity. Um. I, I, you know, again, I, I, I'm, I'm very much appreciative of you, Mayor, for bringing this, uh, to, to our agenda. And having us decide now. But I, I, I think we, um, that the workers have suffered, uh, already. And that needs to be addressed. And so what I would like to see is retroactive. Uh, till, I think December was the peak of when the, um, numbers really went up. And when it was very dangerous. And I don't think we can ignore. What, uh, the workers faced during that time period. And, um, so I, I would like us to see not only bump it up to at least six. But also to see if we can find a way to backdate this, um, because I think it's the right thing to do. And, um. And I think we need to take continuous lead. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure Claire, yeah, cause, um, I just, I didn't get a chance to hear from Ms. Zimmerman about the two dollar.
Uh, I want one moment, Councilmember Di Giovanni. I, one moment. Um, so in regard to that, in your, in, in context of, uh, the ordinance. It does state that very clearly. And so if you're asking that it's in, um, the ordinance. It says covered employee means any person in calendar week performs at least two hours. Of work for the covered employer within the geographic boundaries of the city. So it's, um, and it's paid by hour and qualifies as an employee entitled to a payment of minimum, um, wage from any covered employer. Under the California minimum wage. But it, the, the main point is that i- if you work at least two hours.
That's right. Yeah, so it'd be everyone. All employees. Thank you.
And so, so that would cover everyone.
Thank you. I support that.
So that, 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 that's how it is already.
Right. I don't want, yeah, so I support that. Everyone.
Okay. All right. So it, it seems like there are items on the table, um, you know, that have been brought up. Um, in, in, on, on here. Uh, and so, uh, this is the time that, you know, all. I, I have a motion on the floor with the amendments proposed. Um, that's what I, that's what I have. There was, uh, one more addition of, um, uh, you know, uh, uh. Paying, uh, the employees back to December. Was it this, December? It wasn't very clear, but that, that's. What was it, Councilmember?
December, yes.
December, like, like concrete leak because, um, I, this is, we're probably gonna, this is our urgency ordinance. And then it's only gonna, we're gonna only have time to deliberate today and then it, it goes into effect. So.
Number one.
Yeah, can I, um, I, I know there's a lot of, uh. Amendments and I appreciate the discussion, but I, I do want to kind of give a little bit of parameters. And, and while I understand what's, what's out there that, and, and given this is an urgency ordinance, the findings that are appreciative on the floor. Are what are findings currently. Um, so I, I don't, um, want to limit in any way. And, but I do want to give some parameters of some potential, um, challenges. Um, with regards to some of the amendments, um, if I may, if that's okay. Um, one of it really is, uh, as you know, that, um. There is active litigation. There was currently a hearing, uh, settled, uh, that is out there in terms of preliminary injunction. With regards to the city of Long Beach. And, uh, that judge did deny the preliminary injunction, but currently there is pending several active ordinances. That are out there that have active litigation. active ordinances that are out there that have active litigation. And all of the jurisdictions are very mindful of that. So most of our ordinance are crafted as a model to withstand an urgency ordinance. So that's primarily what I would like to see, that our urgency ordinance is adopted by the council would sustain and prevail in court. That being said, there are some cases, and without doing a thorough legal analysis, that have some issues about the level of retroactivity moving backwards. When you have an urgency ordinance that's adopted, the urgency is taking into effect as a current measure now. So there are sometimes legal challenges that may challenge your ordinances when you go backwards in pay as opposed to moving forward when the urgency exists now. That's how, that's why you're able to address an urgency for the health and safety. So I just, I want to be mindful because I do want your ordinance to sustain, you know, the current ordinances out there really kind of move towards the effective date as the adopted date currently. And that being said, is that some of these retailers already have a payroll and more than likely may not have your base pay rate effective today. So you could have a retroactivity that is effective today, meaning if they got paid three weeks from ago, three weeks from now, that you would make sure that that retroactivity goes to the date of the adoption date today. But I do have some concerns, Councilmember Benaventura, about moving back to December. And I just want the it to move forward. So I just want to raise that without doing extensive legal research. It's just that there is active cases out there that talk about this ex post facto type of legislation.
I appreciate that. And you've made a lot of sense. And I think you've given us some good legal advice to consider. However, what if we could deal with it another way? So instead of getting back their wages, that they should have rightfully earned it back in December, what if we increased my proposal to seven dollars? And that way we are giving it to them on the front end, sort of like addressing the back retrograde pay. And then my second question would be, the, with the other cities that have adopted emergency ordinances, you know what the range is with respect to the five dollar and up range? Or I'm really curious about what, what the other numbers are.
So five dollars is the max I've seen from the other jurisdictions. There are several jurisdictions have adopted it at least over twenty. And I believe the South San Francisco reduced it to four dollars. Oakland seems to be the highest. Long Beach was four dollars. The county did five dollars, the county of San Mateo. So the norm has been generally five dollars as the top. I have not seen any of the ordinances adopted go beyond the five dollars.
What did you say?
That's not to say that we can't do it. I'm just giving you sort of the basis of what the neighboring jurisdictions went up to five dollars. I think South San Francisco did four dollars and the city of San Mateo, I believe, was four dollars.
What did, what did you say Oakland was?
Five dollars.
Well, so my, my request is to do seven dollars and make it retroactive until the most recent, what did you say, City Attorney March?
Actually, it would be from the adopted date of the ordinance, which if you did an urgency ordinance, would be today.
Okay, then today, retroactive, starting today at seven dollars. That's my, I think that's the right thing to do, is the fair thing to do, and it reaches back to the people who should have gotten paid in December. But I'd open to further discussion from my colleagues, but that's where I stand.
I don't mean to put you, sorry, can I interject for just one second? Madam Mayor, is that okay? Ms. Zimmerman, in the other cities' ordinances and all of the research that were done, that was done, was there an analysis of why four to five dollars made sense? I mean, if we, the council were to go up to seven dollars, is there some sort of ecosystem that we might be unintentionally compromising?
So unfortunately, given that everybody sort of adopted an urgency ordinance, there has not been extensive research as the kind of what the basis is. And most of them went with a rule of thumb based on the profit margins that they saw with the big box grocers without trying to have it been excessive. So I have not seen sort of why that justification, except that it's reasonable. Given the course of the pandemic and that the different analysis based on the studies that were presented. Aside from that, you know, be mindful that the city of Daly City themselves has not done their own individual studies. We have based it on sort of national studies and studies that have been put out there. If you wanted to look at that, that would be an option. But given the urgency nature of it, I think most cities haven't done in-depth research. At least I haven't seen it, unfortunately. I mean, I'm going with, you know, when we, when this was provided to the council as terms of information, your best rule of thumb is your neighboring jurisdictions, given that most of them have adopted the ordinances. The challenges that are in place, they're still pending. So whether or not it's excessive, whether or not we don't have a finding to support that, it remains to be an open-ended type situation, whereas at least the city of Long Beach is one that the courts have denied. And that's the kind of a rule of thumb. They went with that, which was five dollars.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. One moment. Thank you, Ms. Waltby, for that question. I think in this moment, I know that Julie has been Lynn from the Labor Council has done extensive work on this. And me, I'll call on a kind of an expert testimony at this time for her to lend any other information that might be helpful in our discussion.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I will actually respectfully correct the City Attorney. San Mateo is five dollars. South San Francisco is five dollars. The county does not have an ordinance on the books. They opened discussion for an ordinance that would impact unincorporated. And that was five dollars, but they haven't passed anything. So that's where we're at locally. And yes, Long Beach, the judge denied the preliminary injunction, and that was seen as widely the test case on the issue. And the judge in very uncertain terms denied that preliminary injunction. As for why the varying amounts, which fluctuate between three and five dollars in the Bay Area. It was largely, as you had said, what had seemed reasonable at the time. But if you all, the council, want to make this larger investment in your workforce that is in a huge degree of struggle, there is nothing that precludes you from doing so. And you will absolutely be the highest in the state. And we will hold you up to celebrate you wanting to take that extra step and wanting to make that extra investment, particularly given the cost of living in our county and the huge disparity between the haves and have-nots.
Thank you for those clarification, Ms. Lynn. And it was, I think, Councilmember Benaventura that was next? Is he still there?
I was curious if either Julie or Ms. Zimmerman knows. Do you know if the judge's decision to deny the injunction was, how much of that decision was based on the amount or more so of the, the theory of that, you know, the city should be able to do something like that. And this didn't necessarily focus on what the amount was. Because I could see the amount should be different based on the geographical location, the dynamics of the city, the, the cost of living at different areas. And that's why I have a problem with holding on to a standard of five dollars for everybody. When I, I think there should be some discretion and some calculation when it comes to where you live and the profits and things of that sort. So that's what I'm curious about.
So the preliminary injunction was primarily not based on, on the amount of money. On the rate of pay, it was based on like, like, like a temporary restraining order that the likelihood to sustain in trial was unlikely. So they denied a preliminary injunction. That's pretty much it. It was based on equal protection clauses and the inability to single out certain businesses as it pertains to the labor code in that respect, but not a lot of detail on anything else. Yeah. And that's the basic order. I mean, unfortunately, there's, you know, not to say that this thing can go on. And if it's not a preliminary injunction, they want to strike it down. But again, it's one of those things that, you know, remains to be seen how the different jurisdictions will look at it if suit were to be filed.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Benaventura?
It does, Madam Mayor. So unless there is more discussion from our colleagues, I would ask that my amendments be added as friendly amendments to your motion, if that's agreeable to you, which let me be specific, is to make it seven dollars and to make it retroactive till today.
Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura. I mean, given the rationale that you mentioned, it's, the premise is, you know, that they should have been getting it even before this date. I feel comfortable in moving it to seven dollars. I would put, change the amendment to that. But, you know, I, that's what I have on the table.
I would second that motion.
I do have a point of clarification. So the current proposed ordinance, excluding the amendments as proposed, Mayor, does exclude managers, supervisors, and confidential employees. Is that something that you currently want to continue to remain in the ordinance? I know that that was brought up.
I don't want any excluded, so.
You don't? I'm sorry.
I do not want those people excluded. And so, but it's Mayor Manala's motion, so I'll leave it up to her to craft it.
Yeah, well, I think for me is understanding, you know, what entails confidential employees. Because if it is management or supervisors that do have a higher pay than, and have the luxury of paid time off and leave, then, then it doesn't address kind of the population we are trying to help, right? So that's where I'm at. And I think I need to understand more clearly, like what that entails.
I, my understanding for confidential employees are the ones that help management in a confidential basis. So there could be unions. But that's pretty much the extent of what I know.
It is, is, does anyone on the call, on this call, know, I mean, what that is? I mean, what that entails? I mean, because then if it is kind of a management role.
I mean, the proposed ordinance specifically calls out managers, supervisors, and confidential employees as being excluded from the hazard pay. So if there is some concern about confidential employees and what they're designated as, you don't have to include it. I'm just bringing it up as an option, but it does exclude managers and supervisors.
Okay. I mean, I'm okay with keeping them on and not excluding them if, I mean, it's a basis of, it's folks that are on the front lines, right, that are, that are working. So that's, that's really where I'm, I'm coming from. And so that's why I'm trying to understand exactly what that entails and and really in that realm, right? Like, does it meet exactly what we're trying, the folks we're trying to help with or assist on the front lines? Like, if a confidential employee is someone that does paperwork and is not seeing people, you know, on the, like, the daily, then I don't, you know, I will exclude that. But I'll include it if these, these are workers on the frontline. So I saw a city manager, Maltby, unmute. Do you have any insight on this?
I was going to ask if we could ask, either it looks like Ms. Dart's hand is up or Ms. Lynn about confidential employees. Typically, in my role as the HR director before confidential employees were sort of quasi-management and they were oftentimes paid higher than other employees. But I don't know the definition as it relates to this ordinance. And my other question is, and I know we want to raise the bar, you all want to raise the bar in Daly City. But if other cities, the ordinances that they adopted, if they chose confidential employees to be excluded, so those are just my two thoughts and questions.
So the county, as well as the South San Francisco, include, included this in their ordinance.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, both South San Francisco and San Mateo had the same exclusions that are proposed in your ordinance currently. But you have with you Dan Larson, president of UFCW 648. He's the telephone, so he can't raise his hand. So Dan might be able to do the explanation that you're looking for.
Wonderful. Please, can you unmute Sir Larson? Is he the unnamed guest?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, this is Dan Larson from 648. We do not have in any of our categories, whether it's drug or grocery, any confidential employees.
There you go.
So I'm not sure what that classification is for, but we do not have it in ours. They're not part of our group, and I'd assume they're a part of management.
That's right.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So with that, I feel comfortable in leaving that in the exclusions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other clarifications as we proceed, Mr. Zimmerman?
No, I think I could, assuming you're, you've completed the motion, I'd like to reiterate some of the amendments that you included to, so that I'm, so I'm clear.
No problem. I can.
If you want to repeat it in the form, in the form of a motion, that would be great.
I motioned to adopt the ordinance with the following changes: to add drugstores, strike seven hundred to two thousand UFC workers, reduce twelve thousand to ten thousand square feet, reduce seventy percent to ten percent, right? That's to capture the larger corporate essential stores. And also add paid leave for COVID-19 vaccination of covered employees. And I can, you know, that's, I mentioned it earlier, right? Not exceeding four hours, but being able to show proof that they are, they have an appointment for vaccination. Um not exceeding four hours, but being able to show proof that they are, um they have an appointment for vaccination. Um and 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 that that's uh the vaccination piece. And then an increased hazard uh pay. To seven dollars.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Giavani.
Uh, thank you. Just a point of clarification, I noted. Thank you for mentioning the ten percent of the square footage, but that changes, say, I'm sure you're in the same line. Change of the definition of the grocery retail uh definition to make sure that that uh is is definitely clear in the language. To non-taxable food items as the definition. But other than that, thank you very much.
It is the the area in which it's delineated in the ordinance, Miss DeGiovanis. So therefore, that's the only location. It is located. Right, where is the square footage? So it it's it will be clear. Thank you for that.
I have the comment, if I may.
Councilmember Sylvester, please.
Thank you. Um just a reminder to my colleagues here, and uh I'm going to couple my comments with what I've heard from the city attorney as well. Um Madam Mayor had made mention, and and I wrote it down, the population that we are trying to help. I think it's an excellent point, because when this first started, we were talking about the low. Income workers who are dealing with the public. Then we started to go off on a tangent to try to address the minimum wage issues. Then we went off and we discussed uh uh where folks, according to other counties, and how much uh it has gone up there. And it kind of alluded to, well, um how about where folks live? And uh, you know, what if we have folks coming in from other counties over to Daly City? Say, for instance, uh what has San Francisco done to be one of the biggest counties in the state? And how much uh is being proposed there in San Francisco? True, not every county is the same. Whether folks will come from down south in San Mateo County to mention a few cities down south, would they come to Daly City to work? As per the city attorney, to draft an emergency ordinance, that pertains to what is going on right now. And by increasing it to seven dollars would kind of open up the door for possible liability. Because we are trying to be above other cities, uh not only in San Mateo, but in the entire Bay Area. And we don't have any facts to back it up. And that's my concern. I appreciate everything that has been done, all the comments and the information we have received. And actually, I agree to all parts of the motion that's going to be placed onto the table. But I cannot agree with doing something uh six dollars an hour. Or I think it's very reasonable. Because we're talking about a dollar more than what we've heard from other counties, but to jump up two dollars in addition. Because we are concerned on retroactive pay, I think we would have a problem. So uh those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester.
And are there any other comments from my colleagues in regards?
Yeah, just one more, uh Mayor Manala, that we are here for the workers and that we just need to just do it. So. It's emergency ordinance and um thank my colleagues. And Julie Lynn and UFCW, Melinda Dart and everyone, and the workers.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh I I saw the unmute by Councilmember Venaventura.
No, I just wanted to make sure that the motion included retroactive pay until today. I don't remember you saying that, but I wanted to make sure that that was there on on the motion.
I I I think I want clarification on the retroactive pay until today, meaning.
Um so essentially, um an urgency ordinance takes effect when the council um. When the council adopts it, and that's sort of the the legal basis for the urgency ordinance. However. In some of these instances, like, for instance, the County of San Mateo did introduce an ordinance as a regular ordinance and not an urgency ordinance. So they do have a second reading for its adoption. Their ordinance will not take effect for another um thirty days from the day of adoption. Some cities have allowed for them to have ten days or fifteen days from the day of adoption, simply because. If you if you have it going to effect today, and I mean, I I don't understand the payroll or anything, but but they've already been paid, let's just say, for today. So that hazard pay essentially won't hit their paycheck. So. A reasonable legal argument would be to say is like, we would allow ten days. Because we still have to publish the ordinance for them to have this come into effect. So the ordinance is currently written as effective date, which means ten days from the date of adoption. However, if you want to make it retroactive to the date of adoption. I think it's reasonable and it's legal to say that, uh because then then so to the extent that payroll has already occurred. And they already got paid for today, and they would have to pay them the additional rate from today. Because the adopt the urgency ordinance was adopted today. So we would have specific language that would say. Your pay would be effective the day of this day, which means if 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 you're getting retroactive pay, you would get paid back paid till today.
Okay, no, that was the clarification I needed. I I thought that we had talked about um no more retroactive pay. That's why that it it moved to seven dollars, but uh it was retroactive to date of the ordinance being passed. That's.
Right.
What um.
Right.
Number of it I wanted. Okay, so that's where um I needed more clarification, because I thought we were moving um forward in kind of the increase of. Um pay to offset um. Yeah. So in this regard, okay, we have a motion on the table with um. With uh seven dollars um on the table. Um what was brought up was s- six dollars from Councilmember Sylvester. I have um on here seven dollars. Um so if there's no other discussion or 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 whatnot, I mean, that's what we have on on the table. It's really that I think the only last piece is including, well, uh Rose, uh please include that um will be.
Effective today.
If today, when we pass the ordinance.
Okay.
Pass ordinance, exactly, to add that language.
Okay.
And the only um. I think dialogue here is um seven dollars versus six dollars, which which I hear on the table, but I have it as seven dollars right now.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I um, this is a quick one. It's a actually, it's a request.
Okay.
I think you're moving forward uh now, so if I can uh um ask the city attorney to call to call the question. Forward to uh provide a vote.
Okay, so so there currently is a motion on the floor. Um I don't know if there's point of clarification. If Madam Mayor, did you want further discussion on that? Amendment of six dollars versus seven dollars from your colleagues to move forward with the motion, or?
Uh, there was a question on that, but there there was a call uh to question right now to move on with um. What we have proposed or you know what I have proposed. And so in that regard, um you know. Uh Councilmember uh Sylvester called the question, and that's what we have on the table. So uh do I have a second? Was it seconded by?
Yes, it was seconded by me.
Okay, Councilmember Venaventura, and so uh do we have um?
So this is an urgency ordinance that requires a forfeit vote of the council. Can we have a roll call?
Uh, Madam, uh, City Attorney and Madam. I called the question so that we can clarify what is on the table. We we've been going back and forth. Can we give me the specifics on each one? I got um something like uh two hundred. Twelve thousand down to ten thousand, ten percent of square footage, paid leave, and seven dollars. Am I missing anything? How about the uh exclusion of the uh certain classes? Was that in the motion?
Uh. Madam Mayor, would you want me to repeat on terms of the call of the question for clarification?
Uh, sure. Yeah, it it basically, I can repeat it. I don't know if you have the the changes. We needed to be uh. Following changes add drugstores, right? It's going to be groceries, uh grocery, drugstore. We need to strike uh seven hundred um people, you know, being contracting uh COVID nineteen to two thousand. Right? Okay, you have that. And then reduction of the square footage from twelve thousand to ten thousand square feet. And then the reduction of seventy percent to ten percent. Uh that's to capture the larger corporate essential stores, right, in regards to groceries. Um also adding paid leave for COVID nineteen vaccination um for employees. And increasing the hazard pay to seven dollars. And in regards to the, I think, confidential employees that was already. Away earlier from the conversation that was clarified by Mister.
And you're including the effective date of the ordinance to today for retroactive pay.
Yes.
Okay.
From Mister Larson um earlier.
Okay.
Confidentiality employees.
So have we removed the managers and the supervisors also from this uh?
So the current ordinance uh excludes managers, supervisors, and confidential pay from hazard pay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilmember Sylvester. So I I'm sorry, I thought you called the question like, let's go to a vote, but you're you're asking for. Okay. So uh now that there's clarification, um I there's a motion on the floor, there's a second. Uh and at this point, I will ask for a roll call. Unless there's no other. Changes. Okay.
Mister Mister Boyanaventura. Dr. Rod.
Hi.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Hi.
Mister Sylvester.
Lynn Sylvester, hi.
Ms. Manalo.
Hi. Okay, thank you very much. That was passed unanimously. Um I know there was a lot of dialogue on that and um really appreciate everyone's work on this. Thank you. Uh to everyone being on here um and all the public comment to the Labor Council. You see Melinda Dart and Julie Lynn and also to UFCW um and also to um the public that had spoken on this matter. Thank you. Thank you, um, Mr. Zimmerman, on your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to our next agenda item. Um our next item on the agenda is communications on the requesting the use of state asset forfeiture funds to purchase patrol car. Computers and communication headsets for the police department. Uh and uh we have. Is it uh Captain Christensen that will be presenting?
It is. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's been a while. It's great to see you all. Um this evening, the Police Department is requesting approval for the use of state asset forfeiture funds to purchase police technology. Specifically twenty-three patrol car computers and twenty-five police radio headsets. In January of this year, the department implemented the VersaTerm computer aided dispatch software for use by officers in the field. This is a multimillion dollar software system which was acquired by our dispatch services provider, Public Safety Communications. Using county measure A funds. It's a multidisciplinary CAD software which will improve efficiency, safety, and resource accountability. And allocation due to its map centric capabilities. The system is user friendly and is heavily reliant on GPS for safety and efficiency. The GPS map centric attributes support driving directions, automatic alerting, and resource tracking. The software computing demands are substantial and require modern hardware to perform. Some of our existing in-car computers meet basic needs, but not all can run the software, or several have had reliability issues. The GTAC laptops that we have selected, and we did so after researching and testing other industry frontrunners with the new software. The GTAC laptops themselves meet our needs and provide sufficient computing performance to reliably run the new CAD and expand as needed. We've recently deployed six of the new GTAC laptops in the field, and this request would allow us to outfit all of our patrol and police assistance vehicles. One additional benefit of the GTAC laptop is portability, something our current systems do not support. This will allow officers to increase time spent in the field patrolling, less time spent at the station completing police reports. The second request for the use of state asset forfeiture funds are for twenty-five police radio headsets headsets. Which are replacements for current headsets which are breaking or no longer supported for repair. These headsets are assigned to specialty units and provide enhanced communication abilities as well as advanced hearing protection. The Police Department evaluated several headset manufacturers and the Invisio model met department needs for functionality and overall hearing protection. Funding for these purchases is available using state asset forfeiture funds. The one-time purchase cost for the twenty-three GTAC patrol car computers and supporting installation hardware will not exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And the one-time purchase cost for the Invisio headsets will not exceed thirty thousand dollars. That concludes the presentation. I'm available for any questioning by the mayor and or council members.
Thank you, Ca- uh Captain Christensen. Um at this point, do my colleagues have any questions? Um I will, I will state um prior to the questions that um to the public watching. This is uh state asset forfeiture funds, and so that these are not funds from our general um reserves. Um and I wanted to make sure that that was something that was clear. Um but um any questions from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Giavani.
Yeah, I just want also to clarify, because I know that it's been long overdue, and these are kind of like antiquated things that really needed to be replaced. Thank you, uh Captain Christensen, for for making sure that this is done. It's overdue for a while. And you guys always take your forfeiture money and always use it in such a wise way, and really appreciate what you do and and um. Actions of late, which I saw applaud all of you for saving lives and protecting our community. And um we need to make sure that you guys have what you need. These are antiquated, definitely, and well needed. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh Councilmember Sylvester.
All right, thank you. Captain uh Christensen, thank you so much for your presentation. Um I have a question regarding budget allocation for deferred maintenance on police technology. Uh how much uh or have we allocated money for maintenance?
Do you have a specific item that we're referring to, or?
Uh yes, uh deferred maintenance, say, for instance, technology in the police car, like the uh. Um the adding or the upgrading of laptops or headsets. Was there an allocated uh item in the budget for these items?
Uh yes, we do have allocated budget items for a a lot of our um revolving equipment, be police technology. Oil proof vest, things of that nature. The budgeted aspect of what we had um year over year for. The budgeted aspect of what we had um, year over year for police technology, specifically the laptop computers, um, maintains our annual needs for replacement of outdated equipment. Um, however, this purchase specifically um, was driven by the new VersaTerm CAD. On the current software or the current hardware, I'm sorry, that we have in our cars now. Um, some of them are, you know, they have shelf lives of five years, but some of them are seven, eight years old and just don't have the computing ability to run the current software, um, which is very data driven. And some of the other systems um, don't have operable GPS units in them um, because a lot of our GPS units for the old systems which were built into the cars um, were separate units, um, which were required replacement. So this is more so um, a purchase to outfit the entire fleet that will allow these new VersaTerm CAD software to operate efficiently for all the cars.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, I really didn't get, uh, was there any money allocated just for uh, the maintenance for future upgrades? Have we thought about putting that in the budget? Uh, I can't hear you, sir. Are you?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now, yes.
Okay. It says connection unstable, so hopefully this works. Um, so there is a line item in our budget for annual um, technology replacement for police um, computers, yes.
Okay, great, great. See, uh, the reason why I asked this question because I'm concerned about a term that I've used before in the past and that's called supplantation. If it's something that the city should be providing, but yet, I, you know, I, I commend the fact that we're using asset forfeiture and, uh, you know, I'm gonna vote yes on this, but I just need some clarification. And clarification is that the asset forfeiture fund is not paying for the entire replacement? Or are we asking to get monies for the asset forfeiture to replace all the laptops and the headsets? Or they only replace, the asset forfeiture is only providing a fraction of that, is that correct?
The asset forfeiture request for tonight is, is replacing probably seventy or eighty percent of the laptop computers currently in the cars. We've already used our um, twenty twenty-one fiscal budget for the laptops, which were the six that we replaced already. So as part of the initial, what we have in our budget, we use that to purchase the six computers that we had to test and research to make sure that they were gonna be sufficient. And this is now to offset the cost for outfitting the entire fleet, several of which no longer have operating uh, computer systems in them.
Excellent. I mean, I see that six were deployed already and uh, those, uh, funding for those six, as you said, probably came from the allocated budget, but this is to try to replace all of them. And I think it's an excellent uh, choice. Uh, the next issue was, uh, I understand that GPS is going to be upgraded, which provides a sense of officer's security and driving uh, efficiency. Is that correct?
Correct. The computers themselves have built-in GPS and LTE air cards. Um, and we've tested GPS throughout the entire city with great connectivity. Um, and the CAD software specifically is very map centric. So it's turn-by-turn driving, you can put geo-fenced areas for passing checks, vacation checks. So anytime an officer drives into a specific location, it'll automatically alert on the computer. Um, and there's other aspects to the software that um, will trigger notifications for dispatch. Say if we enter an area that we've identified um, where there's potentially a hazard or concern, it'll notify us and dispatch as well, just based on all the GPS and map centric aspects of the software.
Uh, yes, I think that's very important also for officer's safety because the laptop will pick up where he or she is just in case they cannot get access via a radio, God forbid, something happening. So I, I think it's an excellent point. Well, I thank you so much. Uh, even though I know that this is not part of the uh, the request that is at hand, I would like to see further use of asset forfeiture funds to maybe perhaps augment some of the programs that Daly City Police Department has put out or continue to do. For instance, uh, say no to drugs, your gear program, more community uh, um, uh, events or items or equipment for our community, whether it's to increase cert training. But basically, you know, if we can look at other ways to use the asset forfeiture fund in a way that can help benefit our community. Don't get me wrong, I, I, I'm glad to hear that uh, you folks are looking into using asset forfeiture to increase the equipment. But at the same time, I'm concerned about supplantation where the city should be providing some of this equipment that they don't. And I think uh, five to eight years is too long uh, to be thinking about upgrading the equipment. We should stay on the cutting edge and stay on the front edge for efficiency. So just my thoughts and I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Are there any other questions uh, or comments? Okay, uh, seeing none at this point.
I'll make the motion to approve uh, to move forward with the uh, the use of asset forfeiture funds and the upgrade of police technology.
Public comment.
So we, we have a, a motion by Councilmember Sylvester. Do we have a, a second?
Mayor, do we have public comments?
I, I, I'm not sure if there's public comment. I thought um, Mister Stolti would have uh, stated if there were
Okay.
any, I mean, we can ask at this point, but I, I don't think there was anything written.
We, we did not receive any written comment. I don't see any hands raised and also this isn't a public hearing, um, anyway, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mister Stolti, appreciate it. Um, and so um, um, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Vina Ventura. Um, may we have roll call, please?
Mister Buena Ventura? Mister Buena Ventura? Um, Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mister Sylvester?
Lynn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
And back to Mister Buena Ventura?
My fourth aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five. Thank you, Captain Christensen, for your presentation. Moving on to item number five, restoration of fire uh, pa- paramedic engine company, restoration engine ninety-five for a North County Fire Authority. We have Ms. Maltby and Chief Myers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of the council. Uh, first and foremost, before I get into the staff report, I do wanna commend you for the hard work that you all did um, at the retreat, the council retreat on February twenty-seventh where um, at our town hall on the, on March fourteenth or fifteenth, I should say, we delve into the council priorities that were identified. But one of the uh, top priorities that council did identify unanimously at the February twenty-seventh uh, council retreat was the reinstatement of engine ninety-five. That was a top priority for council. So um, it is my honor and privilege tonight to uh, share with you staff's recommendation with regard to the reinstatement of engine ninety-five. So staff is recommending that the city council approve the requested funding allocation to North County Fire Authority for service restoration and to authorize the city manager to begin restoration of one fire engine company, engine ninety-five. Um, as you know, the uh, Great Recession left some really long-lasting budget impacts um, on, on our city, city's budget, um, across the board, across all city departments. Um, in twenty seventeen, um, that biennial budget twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, the council, uh, you know, for the first time, uh, had, had to reluctantly adopt a budget that included significant reductions in public safety services. Um, and that included the elimination of the, um, of ninety-five said, said engine. Subsequently, um, in an effort to preserve public safety services, the city council placed a measure V, which was a public safety parcel tax on the ballot in November twenty sixteen. Uh, measure V was designed to restore ten specific police and fire personnel and related operational costs. And that measure unfortunately did fail to get the two-thirds majority vote that was required at the time. So for night, tonight's discussion, um, by way of background, as you all know, and, and thank you to our voters who voted, voted in favor of uh, measure Q. Uh, the city council placed measure Q, uh, the daily city local recovery and relief measure on the ballot in, in November twenty twenty, twenty twenty. And it was overwhelmingly approved by voters, more than seventy-two percent voted in favor of the half-cent sales tax measure. Um, and this tax measure will go into effect in Daly City in April twenty twenty-one. And receipts of measure will be received by the city in June of twenty twenty-one. Um, measure Q specifically referenced emergency response services as well as preparing for natural disasters and public health emergencies. Um, additionally, community surveying in twenty twenty revealed a strong level of support for emergency response services. And within, within the staff report, you can show um, the priorities that were listed by the community, maintaining emergency lifesaving equipment, uh, maintaining local fire protection, maintaining local paramedic services, maintaining local paramedic staffing and capacity, maintaining nine-one-one emergency response, um, natural disaster, emergency response and preparing for future nat- uh, future natural disasters or medical emergencies. Uh, the city also conducted a follow-up survey in twenty twenty. It was called the ti- the Daily City Discussion to further refine and prioritize community spending priorities. And, and again, um, the community stated that preparing for future medical or catastrophic emergencies, restoring and improving local fire protection and emergency medical response and maintaining local paramedic staffing and capacity were all of high priority to our community. So a portion of measure Q funds uh, could be used to fund the restoration of engine ninety-five and nine associated staff members. Funding allocation is closely aligned uh, with the aforementioned community priority, uh, broad support for emergency response services. The restoration of this fire engine company will provide community benefits by serving as an additional paramedic and firefighting first response capable unit. Fiscal impact, the estimated general fund impact to restore engine ninety-five is close to point nine million dollars annually and that would be included in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget request, which begins July first, twenty twenty-one. Um, and it's important to note that this is, a- as long as the engine is reinstated um, and in service, um, this would be an ongoing annual cost. Um, so in, in summary, due to the success of measure Q, the city council now has the opportunity to restore engine ninety-five, three and a half years after its elimination. The Daly City community broadly supports emergency response services and Northern, uh, North County Fire Authority related services are rated as extremely or very important to the majority of res- respondents to community surveys. And I have Fire Chief, uh, Ron Myers here with me in, in the event that you have comments or questions that are related to operations and I'm happy to answer any question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maltby, for that presentation. I will say that this has been a long time coming um, with the community not having um, engine ninety-five for quite some time. And so we know that restoring engine ninety-five is necessary and essential, even especially during the pandemic. And even last year, we saw the rise of wildfires even in our area, right? So restoring engine ninety-five has been a top priority for me and my colleagues. Who I know will want to say some words with exciting time today. Um, so our community will hopefully get um, engine ninety-five back. Um, it's been um, la- on our top list last year as uh, restoring it. And also when we had our past council retreat, it was uh, unanimously along the same lines as a top priority for the safety of our community. And um, really, uh, we heard from our community, we're heard from the voters who really um, ensured that uh, measure Q passed. Um, and one thing they wanted to bring back was engine ninety-five. And so um, at this uh, point and juncture, uh, it is an item on the agenda that um, really um, I know has, uh, there has been a lot of hard work to be able to reinstate um, engine ninety-five and happy to see this on uh, the agenda this evening. Thank you, Ms. Maltby, for that comprehensive uh, synopsis on really how we've got to this place. Um, and it wasn't just um, this one year. It was a multitude of years in trying to um, really um, get back and restore um, this uh, sense, a service to our community. Um, and so at this point, I'd like to um, ask if there are anyone of my colleagues that would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, Councilmember Sylvester?
Okay, thank you so much for the floor. I'd like to first start off with Ms. Shawna Maltby. I'd like to commend you, your staff and the consultant who took the initiative. You knew what we as council were feeling. And you came into the position and, and y- you grabbed the bull by the horns. And when we got that email from you stating, well, I've looked into getting a consultant to uh, look at the possibility of placing uh, measure uh, measure on the ballot in the restoration and uh, public safety. And uh, you kept us in tune. And uh, thank you for your forevision and moving on that. The second comment I'd like to make is to our firefighters of Daly City. It's been a long road and from time to time, we would hear uh, what's going on, what's going on? Especially when we first lost engine ninety-five. The morale seemed to uh, dissipate and I'd like to thank uh, the union folks uh, within fire who basically bridged that gap to tell the uh, firefighters, you know, just hang in there, hang in there. And uh, patience is a virtue and they kept their eye on the prize. So uh, I, I'd like to uh, thank our firefighters for hanging in there. Thirdly, as Ms. Maltby had made mention, this could not have been done if not for the hard work and the support of our constituents in Daly City. I wish to thank you all. We promise we would do the best that we can to ensure that your vote, which really meant a lot and that we are frugal in how we spend these funds uh, for what uh, you folks really wanted us to uh, use the funds for. So thank you all. Those are my comments and I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. Uh, uh, really appreciate your comments. Um, I know um, we all have been looking forward to this day. I see Councilmember Ray Vina Ventura with his camera on.
Uh, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. And you know, I always try to provide humor in everything I say. I was just at ceremony the other day charging my car. And when I saw engine ninety-five on the road, I had to take a double take. I was thinking it was from another city, but as I looked down, that was engine ninety-five. And I'm glad to see that they still start that thing up and still move it. Thank you, okay, Councilmember.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. Councilmember Vina Ventura, you have the floor.
Yes, um, so I wanna uh, say that, you know, th- this was uh, clearly what the voters wanted, what our constituents wanted, what the people wanted, which is um, they didn't wanna accept the, the status quo of just abandoning really, um, engine ninety-five. And they wanted to make sure that we got it back. And they sent us a message, a resounding message by voting for the fund. And they sent us a message, a resounding message by voting for the funds to restore it. And I am so grateful that we as a council, that our city manager, their staff have have made good on that promise. And that we are putting into motion, really bringing back what was a critical part of our safety in Daly City. And so I want to thank really the city manager for keeping it constantly on the radar, for getting the 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 commitment needed to put this thing back together. For my colleagues, for always, you know, because when we had that retreat meeting, this was undoubtedly the number one priority for everyone. And so it wa it was never lost on us. It was always our sort of north star on what we wanted to do. And so it's really good to see it it actually happening. I guess the question that I have, because this is the question I've been getting from people, maybe I can ask the chief. When do you foresee Engine 95 being fully operational to where it once was before?
And thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, and and thank you for the question. We've been in the midst of trying to establish a hiring list so that if you in fact did approve it this evening, we could start moving with going through the process of getting firefighters hired. We hope to have all the process, the academy, completed by the end of June. First part of July is when we look to try and staff that that fire engine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Myers and Councilmember Benaventura. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, I didn't want to go in front of Dr. Rod. Yes, Madam Mayor. I want to say that this goes way back, when you were talking about a long time, I believe it was when Councilmember Buena Ventura was still in the council. I believe Councilmember Now was on the planning commission, I believe, and came to speak as a community member as well as me, myself and all the other ones, remember, when it got shut down. We were fighting to keep it from shutdown, but it happened anyway. So our poor firefighters, they they hung in there and they they still service the community. Our Daly City firefighters never skipped a beat, always hung in there. When 911 is called, they never miss, although it was under a lot of pressure. And knowing that this put the community at risk. They fought for this because they were fighting for the community, not for themselves. Because I want people to understand, I'm a firefighter's daughter, yes, and people have heard that before. But I want to tell you the sacrifice that even the families made during this time when they had extra stress on them, knowing that that 95 had to get going, had to get going. The longer we waited, the more not only is it going to cost, but it could cost lives. And we've had a lot of near misses and a lot of not just fires, a lot of things to respond to, even in other cities. So the fact that we're here and our Daly City firefighters tirelessly threw COVID on the corners with their signs, connecting with the community, making phone calls, stay and educating them in what we were doing on Measure Q and what it was for, and they supported it. And because they got that message out there, they knew, and with the mailers that went out for the managing partners and our our city manager that went out, the all the questionnaires, and the city responded. And when Ms. Maltby said the one where you tear away, and it came back with all this, every single thing was about that public safety. Public safety is number one. Our firefighters have been stressed over it. And now it's here, they never gave up. And now this is it, to actually see it on the agenda. And to the chief and all of them that were, July can't come soon enough. But to know that it's going to be here, to know that we're moving forward, it is incredible. And to the community, 72%, over 72% voting on what really matters. And that is safety, safety in our community. And they know what they need, and they spoke. So people, remember, your vote really counts, and it really is effective, and this is proof. So everybody, that that vote is important. So here we are today, looking forward to it. Bravo to them, the community, the staff, and managing partners with Nancy, everyone. So thank you very much, Rose Zimmerman, and colleagues, let's let's just get on with it and get this thing going. Thank you very much. Long overdue.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni, and now you'll the floor to Vice Mayor Rod Dos Magual.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the staff and all the people that have contributed to making Measure Q happen. It was before my time getting onto city council, and it was also one of my top priorities when I came on. And Measure Q really speaks for, what do these stands for, emergency, you know, emergency services, and it really speaks to what's going on today with our pandemic. But before I share more thoughts, I just want to share some public sentiments from constituents that feel a little bothered that we are voting on this today just because we have a public forum on Monday. And, you know, I just feel a little uncomfortable voting on it today when there will be public comment on Monday. And I would like to hear more public discussion on Measure Q funds. And I'm supportive of 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 this policy. But I just want to just put it on, you know, my colleagues' radar in terms of just the the timing of all this. And, yeah. I mean, from my end, I would propose to table to next, the next March 22 meeting. But I understand the urgency behind all this, and I'm okay with whatever my colleagues would like to do.
Thank you, Councilmember or Vice Vice Mayor Dos Magual for your comments. Really appreciate it. If there's no other comments on here, you know, I think this has been a priority for the community for a very long time. It has been mentioned over and over again. And even in our last retreat, that was just, that just happened a couple of weeks ago. And that's going to be in our our budget presentations. The number one unanimous item across five of the council members was restoring Engine 95. So it it's it's not necessarily not receiving input or whatnot. It's it's something that is, has been prioritized at two years in a row in in that regard. And I I think as far as the timing of it, if I will ask Ms. Maltby in regards to the timing. I think Councilmember Benaventura talked about having staffing and and being able to restore Engine 95. So I think in regards to having kind of the steps to open or start having the engine moving, I think this process needs to occur. But please chime in, Ms. Maltby, around the the timing of having, you know, hiring, et cetera.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I I believe the Fire Chief also discussed this in brief. As you know, it's very difficult to recruit for public safety. And the recruitment process plus all of the background that needs to take place can take months. And so the reason why it's on the the council agenda tonight is to make sure that should the council approve this tonight, it would actually be up and running in July. If we were to delay it by any other, by however meant, however long the council chose to delay it, that would add that much more time to July. So you would push this out to August or September or October, depending on when council adopted. So basically, the Fire Chief and his command staff have have a list of people to choose. And once they are chosen, the process can be lengthy as far as getting people on board. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Maltby. I I think that just provided some clarification because I don't want people to think, okay, we're circumventing a process. It's it's not that, it's just aligning, making sure that the resources for the community around the emergency services with Fire Engine 95 opens up when the fiscal year occurs. And it's, you know, an alignment with what the voters wanted. It's alignment with the whole council's priorities and the council priorities from last year. I see Councilmember Benaventura.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I I really wanted to actually compliment Dr. Rod. Because, you know, I I think he's I I appreciated how he spoke up and raised that issue. You know, I think we all have different concerns and different interests. And I I really admire the way, Dr. Rod, that you brought it up because, you know, the the issues that we have to deal with upcoming, especially the meeting you alluded to, are also very important to me. And I want you to know, and and I want you to make sure you understand that you have my commitment to those issues as well. And and just because we passed this resolution today doesn't mean that it's going to take away from the other issues, especially the social justice issues that you are rightfully concerned about. And so and and I'm just, that's just what I wanted to say. I appreciate you bringing it up. And I just want to make sure you you know that I I concur in your concerns. And I'm I'm I'm, this will not take away from that. So thank you, Dr. Rod.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura, for your comment on that. And we have Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate everybody's comments. And I would just want to reassure those that, you know, we're fulfilling the, with, or Dr. Rod, we're fulfilling what the voters voted for, you know, the safety, everything they went through. We had firefighters fall through the roof of burning buildings, heart attacks. And, you know, for the people that, you know, that also concerned about, they have to respond to their family's medical needs. You know, the 72 out of 100 or whatever. And that there have been instances where even when they're in for the cliff, you know, so I don't have to explain that part to you. And you know about family health issues. So that they have to respond, they don't have a choice. And when 92 is the busiest in the county, the busiest in the county. So when 92 is out, and I know we went through this scenario before, and it is in Pacifico, or it is in Brisbane, or 93, or what have you, where's the four line fire? I guarantee you, they are stretched to the max. And they're not doing this, you know, like as an extra for even even restoring 95. I believe the chief can tell you or or city manager, this doesn't even bring the whole firefighter after their cuts and everything else they've been through. And I know you weren't here before, when they got really cut and frozen. And I believe Ms. Maltby was the HR person, and they didn't even have four on the truck. I mean, they have really been really, and got injured. Because you can max them out by doing so many hours, as you know, and you saw how many hours that they worked and have been injured. And when one is out and there's nobody to replace it, then you're beating them up, right? And they want, they need to go home and be in hole for their family as well. So I think this is something that that, I mean, it's overdue and and it's for the safety. And if we had, God forbid, we have a fire tonight, or we have an earthquake or anything else, and we don't have a plan set that this thing comes soon in July. I mean, and that we get this back in at least some light shade, then we're in trouble. Our pop daytime population is already growing again. I mean, thankfully, because the economy, the ceremony brings it over 110,000, I guarantee you. You know, when it's already booming and we got jolly bees opening and all these great things happening, they need to be protected. So with that, I mean, that's that's what I have to say. And thank you, Madam Mayor, and my colleagues. And let's just get this rolling and all overdue, and and let's keep our firefighters from getting injured as well. They need to go home too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni, for your comments. You know, as mentioned, this is part of the our our budget priorities. It was unanimous by all of my colleagues here for two years in a row. And and now we've come to a place that we're able to actually restore it. But that, as mentioned, you know, that doesn't mean, you know, what what the public will be able to see at our, you know, town town hall, budget town hall, was what came out of our 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 budget priorities as far as the priorities from our council members. And they'll be able to see, you know, what are the other items that we foresee down down the pipeline, right? And and there are issues on there that, you know, that the council values. And and they'll be discussed on the 15th. And so so I know it's been a long time coming to many community members in restoring Engine 95, our firefighters. And and coming to this day is is really, you know, as mentioned, Measure V passed in 2016. But in in the light of even last year, I think it was you, Dr. Rod, that mentioned it was kind of a surprise to see something pass in that regard. But I think people understood that there was a need for emergency services in regards to, you know, responding to health needs, right? Our firefighters were, you know, there to respond when there were COVID calls, right? They 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 saw the families and individuals that 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 needed that assistance. And, you know, we we saw also last year that there were fires that that even happened during the pandemic last year, right? And so San Bruno Mountain, like, oh my goodness. So we know the 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 need is there, and I think we're in a place, we're we're in place to be able to restore Engine 95. And so I want to thank you, Ms. Maltby, for your work on this. Thank you, Chief Myers, for answering our questions. And, you know, at this point, you know, I think we're getting the ball rolling to be able to provide a service back to the community in that regard. And so I I I I motioned to move restoration of Fire Paramedic Engine Company, Engine 95 for North County Fire Authority. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Mayor, we we do have two hands raised from members of the public, just pointing that out to you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stolti. As I was saying, if someone raised their hand, say, well, well, at this point, we will have public comment.
Okay, just hold on one second, you guys, and I will call your name in just a second. Okay, we will start with Eduardo Gonzalez, if you want to unmute yourself.
Hi, good afternoon, city council and city staff. Again, my name is Lola Gonzalez, here speaking as a Daly City resident. I just want to say that I support Vice Mayor Dr. Rod's comment to wait until after the March 15 Measure Q Town Hall. Also, do have a question around like this, this, around this. Is that $2.9 million, how much that will come out of Measure Q to go to the NCFA? And if so, I just want to point out that that's around 50% of what Measure Q is, kind of like yearly, what are you generating yearly? So just getting clarity on that would be great for transparency for me. Um, I'm also curious about where I can find the results on community spending priorities that were referenced um from the report from the Daily City discussion, um, since that report or, um, the other report probably mentioned what the number one, number two priorities were. Um, and lastly, I, I do know the importance of firefighters and definitely support them, especially given the wildfires in our area. I also do want to uplift the importance of respecting public processes to continue to have community support and community trust. Uh, Measure Q does, um, Measure Q priorities include preventing and addressing homelessness, which I think should be the number one priority for this measure, given the pandemic and that there are people in Dilly City still struggling to pay rent and that are being evicted. So again, I hope that council considers to wait until the, um, after the town hall, which is scheduled for March fifteen to make this decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person will be Holly L., if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor Manalo and State Council. I'm agreeing with the previous comment to uh essentially table this vote until after the Measure Q Town Hall. In particular, because during the January twenty-fifth council meeting, Mayor Manalo told residents that Measure Q funds would not be allocated until budget deliberations in April, and I believed her. Yet, tonight council is voting to spend those funds before public input. Uh, voting for the measure is one thing. Like, yes, you got seventy-seven percent of the vote. But y'all also marketed this with public oversight, and that's the part that's not happening here. All residents should have a voice on how Measure Q funding is spent, since it is public funds from power taxes that we voted on. Nowhere in Measure Q language does it promise funds to the fire department. I also remember fires, Measure Q website said that there will be public oversight of the funds, yet here we are with no oversight of those funds from the public. I want to be clear, I am not against the fire department. I appreciate firefighters and their hard work. All I'm saying is to please listen to residents first, and if you say there's public oversight, actually do it. If y'all needed to vote on this tonight, the town hall should have happened earlier. Many of us have been asking for it since November twenty twenty, but it took four to five months to actually have it happen. I am simply advocating for the council to act in good faith and to have a transparent budget process grounded in community engagement. It's important to engage the community first on the money that they're putting into this fund before allocating it. Um, doing so before community input is not okay, and I do not believe tonight is the right night to make that decision. Please table this position until after we receive public input on March fifteenth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Jay G., and if you could um state your full name um at the start of your comment, please.
Hi, my name is Jay. Um, I live and I grew up in Dilly City. Um, I echo the comments before me. I support Vice Mayor Rod Dos Magual to go on this after the three fifteenth Town Hall. Um, let it be clear that I support the fire department and our firefighters. Um, my qualms here do not lie with them. However, Measure Q was clearly mislabeled intentionally so as an emergency tax increase when it's actually a new and permanent tax assessment. In October twenty twenty, there was already discourse between firefighters and next-door members about Engine 95. Why is that? When Measure, when Measure Q never indicated anywhere that it would restore Engine 95 specifically. Um, and it was already downsized four years ago, um, a proposition rejected by Dilly City voters. No one's bringing up the fact that those who'll be most affected will be low income. There's no transparency or accountability. This vote is a vote on half of the estimated Measure Q funds without any type of public community input. Um, for how we should spend the tax dollars to actually fund the community. Uh, if this was prioritized or it's been um the priority for two years now, then why would Mayor, why would you tell us in January that it wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about the allocation until April? Um, and now it's going to be decided on one night without the public oversight that was mentioned in um the measure. And for half of that to already be decided for in one night when the, the budget town hall is less than a week from now is, is not right. And I, I would really encourage you all to push for the vote to be moved at least after the fact. Um, it definitely feels like you are circumventing the process because it doesn't feel that us as community members are allowed to be part of that conversation. Um, and I hear a lot of that, this is what the community wants from you all, but if it really was, then please push it to after. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The, the next person is Nick O'Shea Pinty.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you for bringing this uh item uh to the attention of the public. I appreciate um and encourage prioritizing uh public safety and healthcare through these services. Um, I would also like to echo some of the comments on it earlier, but in considering that we pair this investment with the entire intent of Measure Q, uh, with much-needed funding and program development of city-based social workers, social services, and to assist our first responders in addressing to the urgent needs on medical, mental health in our community. In addition, I would like to point out too that, um, as has been mentioned, that Measure Q funding is designated for public services like these. And it's good to see Engine 95 finally returning um to Dilly City in North San Mateo County. And um just to honor the work of our first responders, um, to understand that Dilly City does value and North San Mateo County values as healthcare workers and that our, our fire department are trained paramedics in the majority of calls that many fire departments make, on medical calls. And so to, to make sure they have the support they need to be able to provide that with the funding is a need for public input. And the public input, I believe, will come from a number of people, of course, who voted for Measure Q, um, who I'm sure the council will value their voice, um, the same way, um, we value their votes in putting things like this forward for our city and community, which obviously will have impact for the, the greater North San Mateo County area. So um, I would like to echo that. Um, it means one more week, and I think it'll be worth it to create the investment in the community so that we can double that investment in looking at what we need in our community to pair up with uh Engine 95 and seeing its return here, which I would like to see years ago, and prioritize that. Um, but I'm glad it's finally coming to that point. Um, but let's get done the right way. Thank you.
Okay, that was the last uh public comment.
Thank you very much for those public comments. Um, I, and um, I appreciate you taking the time out and, and waiting until this late of the evening to voice your concerns and um also um your support for um our first responders in regards to the Engine 95 and um emergency response to um the health uh, health emergencies. So at this point, there's um there, there is a motion on the floor, and I want to be very clear to, to folks that this, um, this doesn't mean that, that there's input um down the line, doesn't uh won't, won't matter around um the other arenas. I mentioned it before that there, this hits all five council members here. Dr. Rod Dos Magual, uh, Councilmember Ray Vida Ventura, uh, Pamela, Councilmember Di Giovanni, and um Councilmember Sylvester. This was the, the top priority on our, our list, five out of five. Um, last year, it was five out of five. So it's, it's, it's not nothing um to to, to change a process or whatnot. In actuality, I want to really say thank you to all of you that said, hey, let's have a town hall because, or some sort of public forum, and we did. It's because of your advocacy and work, we have March fifteenth. But, you know, for you to understand that this has been a priority, um, not only starting from last year, but it has been the sentiment of the community for more than three years around restoring a much-needed you know, uh, much-needed service in our community. Um, and it's, it's not, you know, it's not stating that other um aspects of priorities that we've mentioned in um our council retreat or also input from all of you won't be something down the, down the line as, as far as um what can be done, right? Like, it doesn't mean that, but the number one priority that I will mention again from this council, and it's not only I, Mayor Manalo, but it was all five of uh my colleagues was to, is, was to restore Engine 95. And, you know, and, 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 and that's, that's been consistent. Um, and it doesn't mean to say that, that there, there, there's not other things as mentioned by Councilmember Vida Ventura around issues that members um want to talk about or want to see action towards. You know, we've provided rental assistance to our community. We allocated dollars to that, um, on understanding the need. Um, and, you know, also, there's, there's other work that we're doing um in regards to um responding to the community needs. Um, and so uh, yeah, uh, this is something that is, is not, has not sprung out of just nowhere. Um, Engine 95 and, and the restoration of it. Um, and, and so uh, in, in that regard, I, you know, uh, my colleagues have spoken at the council retreat. It, it transcended from last year. And, and that is, and, and, and that's why we're in this place. Um, it was never an intention, as mentioned, um, by some of you that, you know, I was trying to do something on purpose and, and circumvent something. No, this is, this is because of the fact that um there was an alignment of, of values in, in restoring Engine 95 continuously. Um, and also, um, as mentioned by the city manager in regards to the responses of the community um that they, they wanted to see, you know, emergency fire service back. They wanted to make sure that when there's um like emergencies through health situations when um, you know, there, it's needed. And so we are actually at this, this juncture. So um, are there any other comments um or, or questions for my colleagues at this point?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, uh, we have a motion on the floor, and I ask that we move forward and call the question.
Okay, um, there's been a, a call to the question. There's a, a motion on the floor. Um, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Len Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Maltby and uh Chief Myers. On here, uh, we have, at this point, any public appearance or oral communications. Um, and I will now yield to Mr. Stolti to see if there is any comments from our community.
Okay, please use the raised hand feature, and I will call your name. Um, give me just a second here. Okay, the first person is Melinda Dart. If you'd like to unmute yourself.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and, and uh council members, and thank you for um letting me speak. And I want to commend you for passing the ordinance on hazard pay and also for bringing back Engine 95. But I want to just put in a quick word here for a totally different subject, which is access to nature in Dilly City. Um, a little while ago, I was alerted to the idea of possible development on the cliff above Thornton Beach. And I just want to start um putting uh out there the idea that um this access to nature is really important to citizens of Dilly City and even more, of course, during this quarantine time. Uh, Thornton Beach was the only place where I could take elementary students from the Jefferson School District for free to access uh nature. And we could see there barns, swallows, owls, hawks, plovers, rabbits, marine life. You can even see whales there. Um, I've had students write to me about those field trips um years later and ask me about it. So I just want to say, um, it's a, it's a precious uh asset to Dilly City, and I, I want you to, I, I hope that you will begin to think about ways to preserve it as a haven for all residents and for the children of the future. And I have confidence that as time goes on, uh, you will find a way to do that. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person will be Eduardo Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening again, Eduardo Lala Gonzalez. I'm here to share um two things. Um, first, um, would be great if, if oral communications or public comment can be moved up in the beginning of meetings just to make it more accessible for our community, especially young people. I work with young people. Um, we've had opportunities to bring young people at city council meetings. Um, and sometimes things aren't on the agenda, so we have to wait long, and you know, they have um, you know, they have to like get home. Of course, it was before the pandemic, definitely more accessible now, but for future, just want to note that. Um, secondly, is, um, I'm trying to note that I didn't realize there was a February twenty-seventh meeting to talk about priorities. Um, and I have been able to attend like the City of Happen Bay listening sessions, is what they call it, as invite people that live, work, and go to school in Happen Bay. Um, I was just curious if the council retreat is open to the public, um, and so I don't see it uploaded on the website or on YouTube. Um, so I'm just curious about that. Um, and from my understanding, Happen Bay and Pacifica like host two days, so community members can attend at different times. And then I also provide some vacation. So um, it'd be great to have that similar structure of process out here. Um, and it'd be more shared more widely to be more authentic engagement from the community. I'm happy to connect with any city staff in case I missed, you know, in case I missed something or this already happening. Um, would be great to share with, with other, other young people that may want to, you know, share um public comment when these priorities are being set for the year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And the next person is Nick O'Shea Pinty.
Yes, I would like to speak on similar issue um to start. Uh, one in support of um delaying or altogether foregoing um the development being planned for Thornton Beach. Um, as I understand, this is already working through a process, and I made prior comments that means in addition to other people who have submitted a petition to change.org, um, just to underscore the obvious. Um, one, um, in time of serious climate change, and two, um, the need for preserving green spaces and open spaces. Uh, very few that we have left in our community. Um, in addition to the fact that this is land that has been unceded, but is still on land, uh, so lonely land that we are public officials entrusted with protecting, preserving future generations. Um, and I said, not only as a, a citizen here and as a, a resident, but also as a member of the board trustees where there's another development, um, which I am not in support of, uh, at Ceremay Del Rey, which will, if prospectively followed through on, um, eliminate a garden and including redwood trees in areas where there is wildlife and there is a green space. That is, um, that is one of the few spaces, like I said, that we have in our city. So I like to support in, in looking at as a city and as the biggest city in our county, taking a lead um in terms of climate justice, in terms of what we're looking at federally with the Green New Deal, in terms of preserving these spaces for future generations, and understanding that smart development comes with responsible urban planning and land use development. And I'm, I'm sure that there are plenty of professionals and experts in our community who can attest to that, not only here with San Francisco State University, And I'm I'm sure that there are plenty of professionals and experts in our community who can attest to that, not only here with San Francisco State University. But with city and state and county uh public agencies. So I would encourage you to look deeper into that, investigate it fully. Um before simply recommending, you know, taking on the recommendations of private land developers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And that was our last public comment there.
Uh thank you very much, uh Mister Stolti. Uh at this point, um I am going to ask uh. Uh our city attorney if we can um actually uh take back the item or um bring back the item in regards to hazard pay. Um I just received in information in regards to um our dollar amount of seven dollars at this point.
The item on the urgency ordinance has been voted on, so if the if the mayor would like to have a motion to reconsider to open up. This for a revote, you would need to make that motion. Uh and it would be had to be voted on with the council since the um item has already been voted on. If you would like to have a revote on the count on this item.
Sure. So let me let me clarify with my colleagues that I've received new information in regards to the dollar amount that. Um was proposed and so I am asking for us to um move to um reopen. Um the item in regards to hazard pay at this at this point.
It's a formative emotion at this point, at this time. Item number, item number three on the agenda that was previously voted on. The mayor is requesting that uh. A motion to reconsider, reopen the item. At this time.
So I I think we can give the mayor um whatever uh discretion we can. If she wants to reopen something, I'm certainly willing to listen. So I would second.
Can we have a vote on it?
Mister Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Doctor Rod.
Aye.
Miss D Giovanni.
Yeah, I have a quick question. So we don't have to re-agendize this or anything, Rose?
No, you don't need to re-agendize it at this point if you want to make a motion to amend it since it's an existing agenda item.
Okay, okay, thank you. Aye.
Mister Sylvester.
Len Sylvester, aye.
Okay, we have so we on on item number three with regards to the urgency ordinance. Uh there is a motion for reconsideration on this item. So at this point, Madam Mayor, would you like to. Uh propose in a new motion with regards to this item?
Um I do propose a new motion and and let me state why, you know, we just received, oh, I just received um information. Um that states that if we do seven dollars, it actually will run the risk of laying off people. Because it's too much uh it too costly in that regards that. Five dollars was actually the norm because it allowed stores um uh through the study to break even. And and that was really why uh there was a standardized five dollar number. Um and and that's um and and so in that regard, you know, we're trying to help um folks. Um but if they lose their jobs because um of the fact that um that, you know, the company. What wouldn't be able to um handle that cost, then we're actually defeating the purpose and so. Um that was um from uh UFCW directly around. Uh the the reasons why it was a five dollar number.
So Madam Mary, you saying that they met they this is coming from them, UFCW?
I am.
They suggested you five dollars.
This is, yes, as I stated. Yeah, you're you're very welcome.
Thank you.
And so that uh yeah, so five dollars is actually the norm because it allows stores to break even and so. Um and then if we move to seven dollars or or anything higher, it would risk them being laid off. So um I I moved to, I I moved, I move it to um just change the amount to uh five dollars at this point.
Okay, so um at this point, I believe that the existing amendments to the ordinance as part of your motion. With an amendment to include that the rate of pay for hazard pay be five dollars. In a form of a motion through the mayor.
I'm waiting for the mayor to confirm the amended motion.
Oh, yeah, I s- I stated it earlier, just to to change the uh dollar amount from seven dollars to five dollars.
With the motion being stated by the mayor on the floor, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mister Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Doctor Rod.
Aye.
Miss D Giovanni.
Aye.
Mister Sylvester.
Len Sylvester, aye.
Ms Manalo.
Hi, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank uh my colleagues for um being uh able to uh be nimble and swift on that. Um it would uh be detrimental if uh that happened to the workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um now moving on to agenda item, um at this point, uh are there any council committee? Oh wait, are there any appointments with boards or commissions this evening? Seeing none, moving on to uh council committee meetings uh at this point. I I number six.
Madam Mayor.
Council member Giovanni.
Thank you. Um actually, the SFO Legislative Committee uh considered a um public input and the. Finally, the FAA is actually going to take some action. Congresswoman uh Spear has eight pieces of legislation in regards to the health effects. From the airplane noise and from the pollution. And they did a neighborhood studies in several places with cardiovascular issues, uh psychological issues that are validated. And uh the Legislative Committee is sending a letter with the support of Miss Wentworth from uh Jackie Spears office. And it'll be submitted, I believe, March seventeenth. So that is my report in short and should have an update that they finally want to take action, so we're not waiting. So thank you very much.
You very much, Council Member of DG Giovanni, and we have uh Council Member Revita Ventura.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I wanted to give a a report on the Social Justice uh Committee. That you had created. Um so this is obviously in line with what some of the speakers have uh talked about, which is a concern for. Social justice and uh some of the discussions that we're going to be having um in the coming weeks. So uh the members of the public should know that the Social Justice Committee met uh last week. Uh to discuss a restorative justice program um as a um pilot project in Daly City. Um I don't really want to go into the details of it because it's still in formation and it's um relatively new. But I wanted to assure uh the members of the public um that we are in the process of engaging in the right. Um partners, the right people, uh doing a lot of research on. Um what we can do in terms of Daly City um uh to have a um. Uh a restorative justice program that will work for the city, that will benefit the community. And that the public can have some confidence in. Uh so more is going to be uh coming in the next uh month. I just want to reassure people that we're on top of it. We're we're setting down the plans. And hopefully we can come up with something that's good. We plan on meeting um again. Um after we doing some research and then maybe a couple more times and then doing a study session. So that the public can get involved and have some input and then hopefully agendizing it on a regular agenda to be voted on. Uh but stay tuned, more to come. Looking forward to uh the discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Member Vina Ventura. I I just want to say that um this ad hoc committee. Um was created around um being able to uh garner input and 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 look at. Uh ways to address um social justice issues that um have been brought up or will be brought up. Um within and from the community and also be able to um bring forth. Um programs or initiatives. And so thank you, uh Council Member Vina Ventura for um, you know. Uh uh being part of that committee. Um we also look to this as an avenue to be able to um utilize. Um hearing uh different issues um from the community members. And um this will be uh the committee to be able to uh do so. So thank you so much. Um I think also at this point, we have um had a. Uh council committee meeting with the CDG, CDBG um committee and I will now head it over to Vice Mayor Dasmogball.
Yes, so uh we had a meeting on the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, back on March second, two thousand twenty-one. Um this money is federal money that has been allocated to um different organizations. So we planned on um adopting a spending plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Of almost uh one million seventy-four thousand six hundred sixty-one. Um. Let me see. But I would say I'm trying to read this. Go here. So this is. Okay, let me get this right. Okay, so we we had uh some allocation that that was distributed and we also had allocations for the. For one, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two home funds. Um. Which is uh from the Department Housing and Urban Development. And um we're able to provide um funding to be allocated for affordable housing development. And housing affordable activities for that fiscal year. And also, we were in discussions of um providing allocation plans. Um that talked about for the coronavirus coronavirus aid relief and economic securities act, the cares act that was enacted by the by Congress. March twenty-seven, two thousand twenty, and we are still in discuss discussions on um what will be allocated. And um waiting on the on finalizing reports from the uh from the federal level. So that we can gain, so we have parameters on what it can be spent on for that um for that specific cares act. And um here, Manala, if you would like to add anything else on on CDBG.
Um yeah, thank you, Doctor Dasmogball, Vice Mayor. Um in that regard, you know, we are just waiting on um kind of the final allocations. But some ideas that were brought up, um I remember you stating, um you know, is there more um ways we can support um mental health? Uh resources in regards to uh the effect of COVID nineteen in our community. Uh definitely concur with you on that and that's something staff is looking into. Um in regards to seeing if there's any allocation towards that or what are that, what is the actual mechanisms within our city? That provide um actual mental health support. Um so that's one aspect. Um of course, also looking towards um ensuring that um, you know, there is kind of the sustainability of our community members. Here in Daly City in regards to kind of uh rent subsidies. Um we know that we've already provided dollars for that program. We've asked staff to look at. The analysis of how how much it's being utilized and if it still needs funding. Um towards uh tenant assistance, we we would kind of uh uh look towards that in the near future. Thank you.
Mayor Manala, I also have another report on uh Peninsula Clean Energy. So uh. Since Clean Energy, we actually have um a new chair and a new vice chair. Um Jeff Alps, who was from Portola Valley stepped down. And he's been on board ever since I've been on board for the past couple of years and I believe he was the chair. Um since the since the establishment of PCE. And so the new chair is Rick DeGolia from the town of Atherton and the vice chair is Donna Colson from Burlingame. And we talked about a lot of issues. One was they had the first CC or the um. PC joint powers agreement. Um so it's kind of like a um a partnership with all the different clean energy. Bodies such as Sonoma Clean Energy, Redwood Coast Energy. Authority, East Bay Community Energy and PCE. Um they had their first meeting on February seventeenth, just trying to set down the foundation about creating this giant um joint powers agreement. And then we also talked about uh PCE's two thousand twenty-one legislative legislative platform. That focuses on governance and authority, decarbonization, IOU charges and exit fees. Resource adequacy, environmental justice, community resilience, local economic development and California energy. Market structure. And that's my report from a PCE meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other uh council uh council committee reports? Okay, seeing none, um moving on to. Are there any city council reports at this time?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a few things and matter of fact, a few comments.
Please.
Thank you. Uh in regards to the PCE, uh thank you, Vice Mayor, Doctor Rod. You know, again, I used to be part of that. And I think it's a very uh good thing that you're there. Um just want to remind everyone and uh. Uh there's a rebate from PG and E. You get a smart thermostat. And I like to say I picked up one. Now I can talk to it and tell it to set the temperature in that house. And you get a rebate back from PG and E if you get one, so it might be a good idea to look into that. Uh on another note, this is something for the good of the order and I'm going to put this out to my colleagues. As you know, um Mayor Manalo and Council Member Buena Ventura, um we are a part of the SMC API Caucus. And basically, uh my topic is uh a strong statement for the protection of Asians. As you know, Asians are being attacked on an unprecedented daily basis. Much has to do with the labeling of the US government. Recently, an elderly, defenseless Asian man was blindsided and forcibly thrown to the ground and died as a result. And this was done by a determined killer. Though we believe all lives should be respected at this juncture, it is the Asians who are being targeted for assaults. I like to ask my colleagues uh and and the following. I hope that we can move forward to develop a plan for strict enforcement and rigorous investigations of assaults against Asians. We should consider passing an ordinance to raise the penalty for hate crimes. As you know, Daly City stands united against hate and a few of the other cities I've seen signs throughout San Mateo County as well. We should consider keeping a database of assaults against any race, religion and sexual orientation. Asians must be included in this database. We need to create or strengthen public and safety communication programs for the Asian American community. We should advocate and dedicate for more resources to educate our children about broad systems of racism, xenophobia and different. Types types of racism. We should also consider to hire or assign multi eastern language speaking. We should also consider to hire or assign multi-Eastern language-speaking community officers. And lastly, create a program that welcomes the engagement of immigrants and non-English-speaking people. So, basically, this is just a public comment that I just wanted to put out there to my colleagues. You'll probably hear more about this in the future from other elected officials. But I thought I'd bring you awareness at this particular point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester, for continuing to burn to light that there needs to be a continued eye on ensuring that hate crimes towards Asian-Americans and towards anyone else not increase but decrease. So, thank you very much for that. At this point, I just want to report back to the council that it was great to see that there were continued vaccinations happening in our local hyper-local community here in Daly City. A couple of weeks ago, it was at Jefferson High School. And then also, just the past couple of days, the Nevin Health Center. And so, we want to continue to push for more sites in our community, hyper-local community, so folks don't have to travel all the way down to the event center or to SFO. But I know that Ms. Maltby is working on finalizing details and having more sites here in Daly City. So, that's forthcoming, but wanted to share that with all of you that she's been working hard to work with the county to ensure that we have more sites in our community. And then also, along the same lines as Councilmember Sylvester, the San Mateo API Caucus will be holding a panel discussion on March 27th at 11:00 AM. And with just discussing what is being done in San Mateo County, what could be done, and then being able to speak with representative from Stop API Hate. And having them talk about the actual data that they've been able to compile in regards to San Mateo County. So, that's something down the line. And then also, just wanted to share with folks that there will be an event for Women's History Month on March 22nd, right? I mean, 24th. Is that correct? Right? Trivia night. And what is the exact time, Ms. Maltby? The other, or Leila?
Just not hold on one second.
I'm trying to pull it up. Just for folks, it's all going to be on digital Zoom for now. We all hope that as we get vaccinated, everyone gets vaccinated out there. I know I heard Councilmember Sylvester got his shot, you know, Dr. Rod, Vice Mayor, you know, so as folks continue to get vaccinated, I'm talking to the community out there, I hope you all are getting vaccinated. It's then when we all get to that herd immunity, we can hopefully get events in person, right? Hopefully be in the council chambers. And so, that's one thing we need to all work together with in order for us to get to that point where we see each other not in the Zoom world.
Mayor, we have the date for Women's History Month trivia.
Please share it with everyone.
March 25th, and it'll be at 7:00 PM.
March 25th at 7:00 PM. Very nice. Thank you so much on that. And then now, if there's no other city council...
Mayor, I have one more. An event that me and you spoke at. We spoke at the Daly City Filipino-American Agenda Program. It was on Saturday, March 6th. And Mayor and I spoke at this event. And basically, was talking about issues that are affecting the Filipino-American community in Daly City. And it was put together by a few groups. The National Alliance for Filipino Concerns, NAFCON, the Kapatan Alliance, Malaya Movement, the Filipino Migrant Center, and the Filipino Community Center in San Francisco. And it was sponsored by different organizations as well, such as the Philippine American Democratic Club of San Mateo County, Noipanai Educational Partnerships, Filipino Mental Health Initiative of San Mateo County, and the Filipino Bi-Ni-Han Resource Center. And at this town hall, we actually broke it up into four groups. And we had different sectors that focused on workers and small businesses, education and students, women, and LGBTQ community, and foreign policy and immigration. I think one thing that stood out is, is one of the first times I've ever saw almost most of the Filipino organizations, community-based organizations, student organizations, all in one meeting. Everybody from Filipino organizations at Western High School to the Filipino Student Union at Kaling College. And, you know, the most, you know, and the veteran organizations such as PBRC, all under one group. And usually, we work in silos, so this is one of the first times to actually see everybody in one virtual group. So, that was something that was historical.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And yes, thank you for reminding me on that. It's been a long week in the Zoom world. But it seems like there's more events, right? Like, because you're not traveling to events, there's like, you can like, there's like layers and layers of events you can go to. Sometimes you could be at two events at once, and I know you've all been doing that. We got a superpower because we're able to be at three meetings at once. I'm just kidding. But also, in that regard, I think it was really great to hear kind of the feedback. I sat in the economic, small business sector. And one thing that I want to bring up, and maybe it's something the Small Business Commission could work on, is when local restaurants or businesses have, they want to hire locally, they don't have a place to find out who's looking, or a place to put their job openings. And then like, if someone wants to find a job in Daly City, like, we don't have kind of that like format. And maybe that's something that can be worked on from the Small Business Commission or ECD. But it makes sense, right? Like, if you're a restaurant owner and you want to hire locally, but then where do you post? Or if you're living in Daly City, but you want to see the jobs in Daly City that are around, whether it's what business is hiring. So, maybe that's a space and place, and it seems like it's a need. So, we learned some things over there. Just wanted to share. Okay, thank you so much. And now, if there are no other city council reports, I will hand it over to staff if there are any reports at this time.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Maltby. All right. Now, moving on, it's been a long meeting. I didn't grab any water. I should have grabbed some. But now, we're coming to a portion of our meeting where we will honor people in memoriam. And so, the first I will call on Councilmember Vina Ventura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of adjourned memories. The first one, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Kenneth C. P. Romano, who is the father of Angelique Presidente. Ms. Presidente has been at our council meetings before as an advocate against cancer, particularly with children. And so, she's also very involved in the community. And it's with great sadness that I learned of her father's passing. May he rest in peace. I'd also like us to adjourn in memory of David Tahada, which is Rosie Tahada's father. He's quite famous in that he served a life of real distinction, having served in the 12th Signal Company of the Philippine Scouts, where he was also a huge part of the Batayan legacy. And so, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of him for his service to our community, to the country, and for all that he's done for his sacrifice. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vina Ventura. And now, I will call on Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I'm sorry to bring this report to council in memoriam. It is with great sadness. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Tim Kwan. Tim was very special to me because we worked together in the police department. And it's sad that we lost another fine member. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. And at this point, I will call on Dr. Rod Daswagwal, Vice Mayor, who will adjourn in memoriam with Angelo Quinto, who I will extend my condolences to her family as well. Dr. Rod.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to extend my condolences, and I want to adjourn memory for Angelo Quinto, was a 30-year-old Filipino-American Navy veteran who died from complications after allegedly being knelt on the neck by responding Antayak police officers who were answering to a call that Quinto was suffering from a mental health crisis. Angelo Quinto passed away on Saturday, December 26th. He is reunited with his cousin, his uncle, and some of his dear friends in heaven. Angelo was born in the Philippines but moved to the United States in middle school. He graduated from Berkeley High School in 2008 and proceeded to attend Berkeley City College. He spent a year living in Houston, Texas, before moving back to the Bay Area. His creativity, humor, and drive will be missed greatly by his family and friends. He leaves behind his mother, Cassandra, his stepfather, Robert, his two younger siblings, Andrea and Isabella, and his close cousin, Miguel. As well as, as well, he is further survived by other close relatives and friends who remember his great ambition, his abundance of grand ideas, and many talents, and his constant strive for happiness and success. Their animals in his life, Theator, Koto, and Oliver, will never forget the love, care, and generosity he cared for, cared with them. He enjoyed fishing, drawing, creating, strategizing, cooking, and spending time with those he cared for. He dreamt of having a career in the US Navy and worked long and hard to achieve that dream. In training, he took on valuable leadership roles and proved his bravery, as well as all the wonderful things he was capable of. Although honorably discharged for medical reasons, he tried to remain positive, ensured everyone that the Navy was not a closed chapter in his life. The next month, and as a growing pandemic was to beset the world, he decided his next move was to explore another big dream of his. He worked tirelessly until his passing to start a career in online gaming, a true testament to his ambition, faith, and strength. He was driven to achieve his goal and value the journey to that achievement, as well as hopefully even venture into the world of video game design. He believed he had a guardian angel watching over him, giving him strength and security when and where it was hard to find. And in his passing, we know that he is the guardian angel watching over us, giving us strength and security when and where it is hard to find. Also, the family is inviting the public to celebrate Angelo's life at the city park in Antayak this Wednesday, March 10th at 5:00 PM through a candlelight vigil and birthday remembrance. The family requests to wear shades of blue in Angelo's honor, bring candles for the vigil and offering for the altar. This event is a social distance event. And if you plan to attend, please visit And you could follow the following hashtags, #JusticeForAngeloQuinto and hashtag justice, peace, and respect for all. Rest in peace, Angelo.
Thank you, Dr. Rod Daswagwal. And tonight, I want to honor Ernesto Atienza Guevara. Ernesto Atienza Guevara was 72 years old. He rested in peace on February 1, 2021, at St. Martin Hospital in Las Vegas. He was born on June 20th, 1948, in Bacalar, Pampanga. He got married to Dori Cortez on May 6, 1972, at the UST Church. He had three daughters, Elaine, Maureen, and Michelle. While going to college, he worked at the bank. He took position as a warehouseman and went to Jedia for six years, and then went to San Francisco with his family in 1987. He worked as a waiter, fulfilled his dream to buy a house in Daly City in 1990. In 1995, they started a small fast food restaurant named Phil Am Cuisine. His kids helped out to run it. In the year 2000, he bought a house in Las Vegas. And the year after that, they started a restaurant named Fiesta Filipina at the Jones location. At the same time, he opt out into the real estate business in the Philippines. In 2010, they branched out Fiesta 2 in Henderson, Las Vegas, together with their oldest daughter. He traveled to Hong Kong, Singapore, Macau, Melbourne, cruises to Mexico and Alaska. In 2016, they built another branch of Fiesta, a Durango branch. He loved sports, especially football. He enjoyed spending time with his wife in the casino for fun and a nightcap. Also, every six months, he would travel to the Philippines to meet with his friends. Ernie has seven grandchildren from his three daughters that he's proud of. Ernie lived a fulfilled life, and Ernie was a loving husband, responsible, hardworking, caring father, and generous friend. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Faua Marta Faalilo Malaga Head, Rex R. Magua's head's mother. Let me just get what he had mentioned to read for his mother. One moment. On the early morning of Monday, February 8th, 2021, God with his angels escorted his beautiful mother, Fuwa Marta Failo Malaga Head, to heaven peacefully from their home on a sweet smile on her face while holding hands with her husband. Reverend Elder Tua Head Tina, which so many have lovingly called her, translates to mother in Samoan, was a vibrant, God-fearing woman who served God and his ministry her whole life. She worked 20 years as the Activity Director for the Convalescent Homes in Daly City and Colma. Her service to work with elderly was dear to her heart. She now leaves her loving husband of 45 years, Reverend Elder Tua Head, their six children, seven grandchildren, and a newborn great-grandson. Tina's grandchildren were the light of her world. She always enjoyed singing and dancing with them and simply spending time together. In 2018, Tina was diagnosed with breast cancer. She spent the next two and a half years undergoing several different surgeries, taking various medications, and successfully completing several rounds of radiation. She was in and out of the hospital in the later part of 2020 due to health complication caused by breast cancer. She was in and out of the hospital in the later part of twenty twenty due to health complication caused by breast cancer. Although our family is devastated by this tremendous loss. They are comforted knowing that their beautiful Tina is no longer suffering. They are extremely blessed to have been able to be by her side on their last on her last days on earth. They sang, they talked stories, they laughed and they cried. These times is something they will hold and cherish in their hearts until they meet again in the kingdom of God. And they'd like to thank all the prayer warriors that prayed over Tina and now are praying over them. They can truly feel their prayers through God's love and their comfort upon them during this most difficult time. They lived in Daly City from nineteen eighty six to November twenty twenty. Also would like to adjourn in memory of June Garcia. June, let's say farewell to a great man, June Garcia. This is Randy Garcia's grandfather. In his words, his grandpa was a great man who influenced many lives, most importantly, leaving behind his wife. Six children, eighteen grandchildren and five great grandchildren. Without him, the road ahead of their family would be many would be tough for many of them. He was a solid foundation that kept them strong. As his first grandchild, he knew that he knew better, he knew better than anyone how kind, supporting and loving he was. His grandpa. He knew that it was going to be a tough road without him, but he knows what his grandpa had always taught him. To work hard, family first and do it my way. Let's have a moment of silence for each and every one of them this evening. Thank you.